I'm gonna call the town council work session for Tuesday, the twenty sixth of November to order. We are gonna start with. Planning commission decisions. Do we need to say anything? Cause no one's gonna come down and. No? Alright, great. Legislative review ordinance approving four leases at the community center. First reading.
Be good afternoon, Mayor Owens and Town Council. Before you is an ordinance for first reading that will approve. For long term leases at the the community center. The the pound code requires us to. Press counsel to approve leases longer than a year with the exception of at the Breckenridge Professional Building. Which in which a three year lease can be approved administratively, anything longer needs to come to council so. Three of these leases are up for renewal after ten years of that facility being open. They were starting from day one, so it's a reminder that we've been in that space for ten years. And then the other one is to fill the currently vacant space that was vacated by Treetop Advocacy. When they moved over to the Breck Professional Building, so. Before you, the terms are all fairly similar. Happy to answer any questions you may have on the specifics, but it's Summit County Libraries, the Summit Foundation, Breckenridge History and Breckenridge Film. Those are the four entities that are being approved for long term leases and. If approved on this reading, we'll bring it back in December for second reading. Need to be done by the end of the year so that we can enter into those leases when the other term expires and then we won't bring these back to you all until. Ten years from now.
Sounds good.
One other thing that Keely and I had chatted about is there's, I think, the opportunity to change the code so. We don't have to bring them back to you if they're longer than one year. So that is a decision of the council and I think in the past, particularly with the community center. There was a desire for council to have more input in those leases and how some of those spaces were being used. So it made sense that that we would bring them back to you, but it is. Something to consider that. In this case, they're ten year leases, so you're not gonna see them again, but we do have other properties. So you may wanna consider a little bit more leeway for the manager to be able to sign some of those without bringing them to you.
And that's for everything more than a year?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I I think community center makes sense because we're really focused on the nonprofit, so let us, you know, weigh in on those or whoever's on council. But I think our other properties, that's alright.
But isn't that the case with everything? Like if there was a nonprofit that didn't have a home? Wouldn't we wanna consider?
I mean, some of our properties. That aren't necessarily nonprofits, right? Trying to think.
Maybe what we could do is come back to you with a short work session item where we could kinda give you some ideas of the types of things that fall under that code. And then you can kinda have a good, make a good educated decision on whether or not it makes sense to change it or just leave it as it is.
I think that'd be good. You guys okay with that?
This is triple net or are they gross?
Uh, we're trimming everything to gross.
Um.
Favorable.
Well, so the community center, we didn't. Did we do a cam with that?
Before I, so I don't think we had a cam with that. Um, I think everything rolled up into the the lease.
Right, but uh fifteen dollars a square foot gross lease, that's it's a favorable position. Great.
Anything else?
Well, to that question. They do pay all taxes that are associated with their space. And their own indoor insurance, so I guess. There's a little bit of the netting.
Double net.
Yeah.
Not triple net.
Yeah.
And they're all nonprofits, so I don't think they pay any tax.
But but insurance is definitely one of the properties.
For their space, but like for their. Personal belong, like their belongings in their personal property, but not for the building.
Exactly.
Insurance.
Right, they would still pay for their personal property.
Cool, you're getting a great deal, that's fantastic.
And then my general question was. Not all the terms are the same for the different leases. How do you go about deciding the square footage for different spaces? The square footage price, well, price.
Uh, I would have to go back and look at the original leases, I don't know you, Rick, if you were.
How we determine what the square footage they were getting?
Yeah, no.
Although price per square foot, rent per square foot. Which isn't always the same. Maybe that could be part of the work session, how do you figure that out?
The Treetop lease, those are the same terms that Treetop is paying, so when the library, if the library assumes that space, then they're paying the same rate that the Treetop was paying that space. So that was, I think, negotiated differently than the other three, so there was a different timeframe when it was negotiated. Um, and then as far as, you know, CPI or three percent. You know, annual increase, that was really negotiated with each entity based on their their existing contract.
We can, as part of the work session, we can go back and look at how we originally set that up and maybe over time why some of those rates have changed. Because I think some of the spaces have changed hands and so that may be when rates changed a little bit, so they weren't all in the same. Um, but I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah, I just think with some of the other discussions that we're talking about, um, right now with contracts, I think we should just be really aware. Nonprofits especially, I'm like. What kind of? Different deals we've struck with different nonprofits. Anything else?
Do we ever have other inquiries from other entities who want to rent that those spaces?
I'm curious.
I don't, I can't think of the last time, um, there was a period where Burke was looking for space, but they found it. And I don't think we've had any inquiries recently.
Mountain Top came to us seeking any kind of, any commercial space that we have, which we really. It's pretty good.
Yeah, the community center wouldn't be the right, they'd need basically like the library space in order to that work for them.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to approval of open space intergovernmental agreement with Town of Blue River and Summit County Resolution Duke.
Hi. Noon Mayor and Council. You have in your packet a resolution that pertains to an IGA and and sale agreement. To sell one nineteen Bonanza, which is the property in Blue River that we purchased in August. And jointly with Summit County to the Town of Blue River. And the way it would work is that, um, we would contribute fifteen percent of the original purchase price as would Summit County. As part of the sale to Blue River and that would be in exchange for, um. Protection of this property for the purpose of open space and the. The trail connection, this would be part of connecting the Blue River Trail from Wakefield to Redonia Gulch currently. In that location, there isn't legal access from. From one part of the trail to the other, uh, so so this would secure that. The financial implication would be, we we spent. Two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars initially in the purchase and we'd be recouping a hundred and fifty three thousand of that as part of the sale, so so our end financial. Cost would be sixty five thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars to do this. May I answer any questions relating to this?
So recouping the hundred and fifty three thousand?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions for Duke? This was what we agreed on, right? Before or sort of knew was coming.
This. Who who purchased, like who has the deed to this property right now? Is it the three?
Just us and Summit County.
Okay.
And we'd be selling it to Blue River and when we bought it, you may remember from BOSAC, there, we weren't sure of Blue River, Blue River's level of interest and we thought, well, we could potentially. Put an easement on this property and then flip it and try to sell it to somebody that wanted to, but it's it's single family residential zoned. So we could have flipped it, but Blue River did wanna come in and buy it for the the terms that I explained and so that we look at that as the preferable. Preferable option.
And more of a, uh, you know. Trust and verify, will we still have an easement place sign before we sell the majority interest to Blue River?
No, the IGA outlines that they can't, it can't be developed and the trail can go through there and then it calls out a couple specifics. Relating to this property, one is that the bridge, if you remember that that's a challenge here, it's either gonna go on an easement on the neighbor's property or the bridge here, but that's that's a key piece of it and also. Wayfinding sign is through the neighborhood of Blue River, because you'd be on some of the Coronet Drive roads and wanna make sure people using the trail can get from. One connection to the other through the through the neighborhood.
And we'll, and there'll be something in that language that will. Uh, make sure that's accessible to all and not just Blue River residents.
Yes, yep, that's spelled out, right, yep.
It's very robust as far as protecting the trail, the easement. Uh, if they close off the trail for some reason, we can get back out of the deal and so I think it looks really good.
Yes, Keely has reviewed for your peace of mind. Add the access piece in there, I think that's great.
Did you say something? I'm sorry. Alright, anything else? Great.
Okay, thank you.
Already, thank you. Yeah, that's favorable. Alright, managers report, um, public projects. Had a little work at the ice rink.
But good afternoon, Mayor and Council, um, so I don't have anything additional to add to the memo, um, but I can take any questions. That you may have at this time, but yeah, the memo highlighted the ice rink.
Sounds good. Any questions at this time? No, looks really good, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mobility.
So Matt, Matt is not here, he's not here.
Okay.
Um, but if you have questions, we will be happy to.
Took the bus home.
We can and we can.
Alright, they talked about the green commute challenge, bus to work day is December tenth. Anything else? Any questions?
Jay, I'm sorry, did you have questions about the green route?
I I'm more of a statement of that, um, I understand, you know, our mobility department is so wonderful and they do. Everything they can to accommodate everyone and I understand that. Right now, uh, Vista Verde two can't be on the green route due to logistical challenges on the number of buses we have, the number of stops and. The fact that none of the stops on the green route right now are. Could, could, could we afford to lose? But how, you know, detrimental it is potentially that as we have Vista Verde two leased up, that people are gonna be making their. Routines now. Without having the most convenient stop for them. Uh, available, uh, there are others that are a little bit further away, um, but. You know, one, one of the things that brought this to my attention was a ski coach for Team Breckenridge, you know, was there with. Two or three pairs of skis and his boots on the back and full backpack and having to walk, you know, eight hundred and seventy yards or whatever it is to the Vista Verde one. Uh, bus stop and that, it it's just, it's disappointing that we weren't able to make that happen yet and I would just urge town to, uh. You know, work ur, you know, urgently to try to get that, uh, bus. Uh, so that we can include and start people's routines and the, you know. The precedent for them for the the new tenants of Vista Verde two. Um, to allow those to be set with the use of public transportation.
And to follow that up, we don't want to start a pattern of people driving their cars when they could ride the bus and wanna ride the bus, but for having to walk eight hundred yards with. A lot of equipment, so.
Both of those sentiments and would love to actually see us. See and down the road, invest in more bus service more regularly on. I feel like there's a, from Vista Verde to the ice rink, like that's kinda like the main thread, it's like, you know, kinda your point about the trolley, like. Is there, are there some routes we can get a little more repetition to get more boots and bikes and buses in town, so.
Yeah, twenty minutes will be great when we get there, when we get the new buses.
And then I'll ask the question after the comments. No one else has a question, um, so the top of the memo Shannon says. The intention is to begin servicing the stop in the spring of twenty twenty five when we switch to summer route service, but the intention is to have it year round, right? Not just when the summer route is running.
Yeah, we just need, um, additional rolling stock, we should have that in place by then.
And I have one other question, where where is the? Uh, greeting point going to be to? Welcome the bus riders and hand out the donuts and do all that.
That'll be at the transit center? Yeah, that was. Also ride on buses with donuts a few flights. Leave it up to you.
I'll sell you a pie.
A good job.
A pie and a bunch of forks.
Jay, anything else? Alright, we didn't need Matt to come in anyway. Inability. Jesse's here. Happy snow day. I did not have anything else to add besides what's in your memo and I'm happy to answer any questions. Questions?
Can you expand a little bit on the, um, the three pilot projects for Electrify Breck?
Yeah, so, um. We had budgeted seventy five thousand dollars this year to look at a large scale electrification project, we were actually hoping for a commercial building. But midway through the year, we had absolutely no interest or nobody was ready to do anything, so we said, why don't we look at? Modeling our solarize program, which started in twenty nineteen and has been really successful. Primarily because we've worked with one contractor who has streamlined the application process. As well as has been op, able to offer bulk per, uh, they've been able to bulk purchase and then offer discounts to homeowners, so we tried to replicate that model. So we worked with a contractor. When I say we, in this instance, it was us and HC three, um, who worked with, uh, Contractor Midwest Appliance and tried to put together a program. Turns out heat pumps are a lot more complex than solar PV. Um, and so we had budgeted for eight rebates, um, and then throughout the process, we didn't have as much interest and we also were finding that those rebates were not. Were not enough to get projects across the finish line and so we, we kind of, we, we played with the numbers and based on what, um. Some of the, um, national research is showing about where people are. Able to like come in at with heat pumps, um, we matched that, so, um, we had three projects go in. I don't know if they're all three done yet, but they certainly have been started, I know one project for sure is done. Uh, we also focused on the Wellington and Lincoln Park, hoping that because they were similar homes, that it would help expedite this. Turns out they're not as similar as we thought either, so we have, so we have some regrouping to do, um, and it might not be that. The same program that we offer again next year, but we have budgeted the same amount to try to continue to to incentivize electrification, does that help?
Yeah, that's great and I'm just. Curious because, um, I know there's been conversations with HC three incentivizing people to electrify, but when it's something like their furnace goes out, their boiler goes out. It's something that needs to be replaced instantly, so streamlining that process as much as possible and especially with this program, I'm not sure if the full. Budget was spent on just three projects, but I would really focus, as you did on this pilot project, on all our workforce housing neighborhoods, some of them. Where those, um, those natural gas. Equipment is getting older and older.
Yeah, um, we did have, the three projects were not imminent on boiler replacement, which was nice because they were able to keep the boiler as heat backup. When it gets really cold, um. The, the efficiency factor of a heat pump, um, does not hold true and so if it's negative ten degrees, then you get. Uh, a system that's a little bit more like your typical electric resistance, but when your heat pump is working from five degrees to. You know, however warm your heating, um, then you get that two to one efficiency level. So we were able to keep those boiler backups, but they're not necessary for the system, um, so when they do go, those, those homes have some redundancy to them right now.
Great, thank you.
Turns out the older boilers, the less efficient ones, actually have a longer lifespan, so.
How did you get the word out about the electrification and like really all the, um, different programs that we're doing?
So for Electrify Breck, we really targeted the HOA communications, the Facebook page and then word of mouth. For all of the residential programs, um, HC three has a budget built into our contract with them and they do the marketing for that. So we often will, when we get phone calls or questions, we can refer people or if we're talking to homeowners just about all of the opportunities, you know, we can. Point them in in the direction of the Energy Smart Program, but Electrify Breck was really targeted, we did not like.
Yeah.
Blast it out to the universe.
Any other questions for Jesse? Alright, thank you very much.
Because you usually are doing something else, um, the e-bikes were in this as well. And I just wanted to make sure people saw that and the public heard about it, but it looks like a five hundred thousand dollar two year grant. Was given to us and doing the math on that. It's actually going to make the program cheaper next year than it was this year, besides expanding the program. So kudos for getting that grant.
I will thank you to Aubrey and Teddy who worked on that, um, I will say we are still working, so we, we asked for three years at one point two million, I think was the full ask, so we received. A little bit less than half of that, um, they just had so many. Grant applications and they are still working through the scope, so when that five hundred thousand is spent over the next couple of years is still. To be determined, we don't know if it's all gonna come in year one or it's gonna be broken up, most likely it'll be broken up, but we don't know. This, it's hard, it takes a long time to contract with the state.
Even if you look at it as two fifty a year.
Right.
Um, it still improves the bottom line of the e-bike program while we expand it.
Great job, right? Thanks, Jesse.
There's no housing update.
How about open space? There's minutes. We were there. For most of it. Any questions or clarifications? No, okay. Um. Let's see, committee reports. We had social equity. Was it, I think, in there, right? Yep. Comments, questions? Thank you floor. Alright, financials. Tracy and Pam. Very quiet in here today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, in your packet you had financials for the month of October, which covers the ten months of twenty twenty four. October is reflective of our September sales tax collections. Overall, we're four point nine above budget in our excise fund. And one point one ahead of prior year, sales taxes currently had one point nine in comparison of our budget and flat in comparison to prior year. Accommodations tax is ahead two hundred thousand in comparison with our twenty twenty four budget. And behind two hundred thousand in comparison with last year. Real estate transfer tax is ahead one point eight in comparison of budget and eight hundred thousand in comparison with. Prior year. Our net taxable sales year to date for September, um, in comparison of twenty twenty three are flat. However, if we just look at the month of September, uh, we were behind by five point eight two percent, we did see a slight, um. Decrease in all of our categories except for construction. Retail in town was behind seven percent, retail out of town was behind by four percent, four percent. However, real estate transfer tax is, um, trending high, October came in thirty percent stronger than October of twenty twenty three. And overall year to date in real estate transfer tax, we're ahead by fifteen point four two percent. Um, and single family homes continues to be the largest category. I am happy to take any questions before I hand it off to Tracy.
Thanks.
I, I have one.
Yes.
What is the square root of, no, I'm just kidding. We're looking at the last quarter of the year and whether we, the versus budget were above or below. How does that impact the budget for next year with the the carryover funds that are happening with the, you know, the routine earnings? And at what point? Does that change, like if our budget for next year was planned on being ten million in the red and we ended up in the last quarter catching up by. By three million. At what point does that impact the projections for next year?
So there, there will be appropriations, um, Tracy and Dave will be going over that and, um, in the December tenth meeting, there will be appropriations with. All of the rollovers to catch up, um. On that.
So if we decide to, so if we have appropriations for money that we're gonna spend additionally. And yet our sales tax revenue is positive or favorable, then those can watch each other out.
Uh, what it, um, you're gonna end up with a more favorable starting fund balance. Um, that would then obviously carry through, um, we would potentially next year have the opportunity to look at some of our transfers that may already be in place. If they weren't necessary, we could look at cutting those back, uh, but that would be something that we could make a decision later on in the year.
And ultimately you book, as revenue comes in in twenty twenty five, you book it to twenty twenty four up to a certain date. Is that accurate? So it doesn't.
Yeah, so January sales tax will be collected because they belong to December, will be put into December.
When you collect it, right? Is that how you determine where it goes?
Correct.
Well, no, it's when it's due, so they're gonna collect it in January for December and they'll allocate it to December.
Gotcha.
Yep. So looking at the overall financial statement for October, you'll see that we're favorable, uh, by about a total of eighteen million, which makes up nine million in revenue, favorability and nine million in expenditures. One of the biggest chunks in the favorability and revenue that Pam already spoke about is related to taxes, but there is a favorability of the investment income of about three point two million and that's because of the market value of our. Uh, investments and dividends have been favorable so far this year. For expenses favorable by eight million, the majority of that is really sitting in capital. Where expenses have either, we weren't able to either complete certain projects or the invoicing just has not been received yet, so we do keep the books open through. Uh, the end of January to make sure we capture all of our twenty twenty four expenses and. uh the end of January to make sure we capture all of our twenty twenty four expenses and uh make sure that they are booked appropriately to the right year. Um saying that we are favorable in expenses by nine million will sound a little confusing because next month I'm gonna come to you for appropriations. Um the problem is, most of the savings are sitting in the capital fund. And I, right now, when I'm looking at my predictions, I'm probably thinking around about twelve funds I will be coming to you to appropriate funds for. Some of them just to cover some little incidentals, and a few others will be more substantial. But I'll have the details once I get through November close, and I can then consider what we think's gonna happen in December. I have, uh Dave and I will have a much better picture to come to you, so, you know, watch that space.
We'll look forward to it, yes.
Anything for Tracy?
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right, community outreach and engagement update. On memo. Floor. Brooke. On. Isn't that coming? Oh, isn't it? Yeah.
All right, Mayor and Council. Um I just wanted to preface this um presentation and let you know that this is our communications and community engagement team. I know you've all met them before, but now that they're fully formed, we do hope to have these. And and those are hats appropriate for today. Um we do hope to present to you um on a quarterly basis, starting in twenty twenty five. And we're kind of, this is our first attempt at a full presentation to you all, and we're trying to strike a balance between metrics and commentary. So we welcome feedback, and if there's something you'd like to see that we're not covering, we can certainly include that in the future. I'm gonna hand it off to these guys for the rest. Oh, okay. Okay, so we're gonna start with the water branding campaign. Um the biggest things that I kind of wanted just to hone in on is you can see the social ads, you can see the Summit Daily News digital ads, and then you can also see the Effective TV Comcast ad tricks and everything like that. Um we primarily focus on targeting adults eighteen plus and Spanish speakers in Summit County. Um and then something that's kind of newer, that at least to me um is the dining ads and the in-room guides, and those kind of go outside of that, like resident um focus that we have. Um and then this campaign started in July and has been going until now, and then we are working on phase two for twenty twenty five. Uh same kind of thing with the plastic ordinance. Um the only difference that's not on here is the TV ads, and that is because we did not have them at the time that the presentation was made, but um we did get a hundred and seventy-five thousand impressions and then a ninety-two percent view-through rate. Um the other one with the other metric, that was the viewing hours and interaction. I think that both of these campaigns were combined, so in total, we have eight hundred and forty-three. Um and then these are some of what those graphics kind of look like.
Uh for recreation, this is the first year that uh recreation has traditionally had its own separate marketing uh person and budget. This is the first year that it's been included as a combined budget. Um as you'll see, as we go through, we do a lot of um of our communication and promotion through free um free systems. I don't know what the word is. But uh so big piece of that, of course, is our social media. We have a a main account of recreation, Facebook and Instagram. And Gold Run Nordic has standalone, and the Golf Club has standalone, and then we've also added uh separate accounts for Race Breck. Uh the Facebook account for Race Breck just came on this fall, so this was the first uh the first year that we've had it. Um actually, that should be twenty twenty-three, so we started it just before this season. Um so we've had good growth to begin with. Um strong growth in all areas. Definitely our our, most of our messaging comes out of our main account. Um Golf did something unusual this year and was having a lot more um reels and others type of engagement type of content done onsite, so that has been a real, as you can see, a really huge boost on their Instagram. Um one reason that probably isn't as reflected as much in the Facebook is they weren't um they weren't ta, it wasn't tagging as closely, it was tagging to the towns' um social sites versus the main Breck site. Um then also, you can see Gold Run is just kicking off. A lot of work to do there. We do have a pretty dedicated following, but uh definitely this year with the addition of the T One Restaurant. And uh we're gonna be doing a lot more activities and promotion there. We're trying to do something similar as what they did with Golf this year. We have ki, uh good, the same team there, so they have a really good track record of of how to manage that. So we are looking for some good growth for Gold Run this year. Uh again, as I said, that uh recreation has been kind of standalone, so this is just, this is really just an overview of of our outreach and promotion. Um really, the main paid is uh Effective TV, which is Comcast and radio ads. Uh in-room guides, so we can primarily, and that is throughout Summit County, to get basically like the ice rink in Nordic out in front of countywide guests versus just in-town guests. Um we'd have, we don't do a huge amount of print, uh Summit Daily Print. Um but it just depends, that's more like Race Breck and other types of um event-based. Uh Pumpkin Palooza is another example of that. So as you can see, the other uh free mediums through the website, uh we have a lot of stuff in the calendar, which is attached to the often e-notify. We're also on the GoBra, uh very heavily on the GoBra calendar, which now is also part of the um of their app, so that's the backbone of their app. Um Summit Daily News Calendar, um and then we also have our in-room, our in-building digital signage at the Ice Rink. The Ice Rink, the Nordic Center and Nordic Center Golf and at Breck. So we have, we have two platforms that we do commercials and other display ads. Uh one is called Reach. And the other is called Atmosphere. Atmosphere is the one that you may have seen, like at an airport, that runs like cute dog videos and cats playing piano in between. Um also, we do bathroom stall newsletters, and then uh we do do a couple of magazines. But like I said, we're pretty limited on our, on our paid. Uh Race Breck is very standalone, very um customer-focused. Uh we do a lot of email with them, and mostly that's uh we do kind of a preseason promotion to uh beef up our user base. The full database for them is about fifty-one thousand people. Fourteen thousand of that is uh copied over from ActiveNet, which was, which is the recreation registration. Um and that's just to kind of give you a number, like the number of emails that we send out and the total number of people that we reach with those emails. And as you can see, it it breaks out pretty, you know, pretty heavily by specific bike, a lot of that Fourth of July activation, uh Oktoberfest. And then we also do support uh Breck Bike Weekend, the Imperial Challenge, even though those aren't yet, at as of today, are events. And then finally, for uh the recreation emails, we do a a lot of communication, and we had great feedback from Council as far as um being more proactive with facility notices. Um so just for this year, we've had twenty-four of those go out uh to a hundred fifty-nine thousand people. Other categories we do are uh program surveys. We have a lot of communication with our um youth with our families about uh summer camps, after-school registration, as you know, which is coming up uh in a couple of weeks. Uh we have a small amount of events um communication. Again, those are mostly like Pumpkin Palooza, um ice skating, uh the ice shows, Race of the Sand, and stuff like that. Um so this is actually a separate um email database than is used for right, for Race Breck. There are separate programs. Um and that's all for email.
My part. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um so as you guys saw, we gave you a beanie. Um so our division uh purchased some promotional items that we hope to have around the community. Um as we go to events and we wanna kind of be known, especially with minority groups, we want them to know that there's a town of Breckridge and what does that do, and how can they use us as a resource? Uh but a lot of the times uh when we go to events, everyone else has promotional items except us, so we wanted to make sure we had something. Um and something that they could also wear and feel like they're representing Breck, because as we know, they're all um crucial parts of our community. And so we value them all, all of our residents, and so we um we really wanted to make sure we had something that um they could wear and feel proud to do so. Um so now you can also do that for us um out in the community, so, yeah. Um another thing that we've been working really hard on, um as you guys may know, that's kind of why I was hired, was to um engage with our Spanish-speaking community members. Um and we've been, I think we've been doing a great job, and we we've had great success. Um we've been posting a lot of our communications in Spanish as well as English, um and we've started to um even hone it in and putting it and sharing it out with our Latino groups. Um this highlights only one of them, because that's the one we started with. It was our most common one and the one that has the most members, but we've also started sharing on another uh Facebook Latinos uh page that kind of puts the messages out there specific to um our Latinos in Summit County, and it has had great success. We've had, as of today, sixty-one posts and two hundred and sixty-five likes. Um so we get a little bit of engagement. I think we still have a lot of room for growth. A lot of the posts don't get a lot of likes, but you can tell that people are starting to get to know who we are and why we're posting, and the fact that there is a town of Breckridge that can give them communication in their language i- is is happening. And so I think they know it, and um we're starting to see some engagement. Our most popular posts, as you can see them on there, um and to my surprise, I think the the Breckridge one, the Breckridge Police one, the PD one is it was my favorite one, because it got so many, and I was not expecting that. Um but they, yeah, they're paying attention, they're knowing we're out there, and thanks to, I I'd like to say that thanks to us sharing specifically to these groups, we've gotten a lot more followers. And we can't verify for sure that our Spanish speakers are the followers, but we can see a lot of Spanish names on our new followers list, which I think is very exciting, because that means people are feeling comfortable going directly to our page and knowing that we will have content that they can use or have us as a resource for communications and information that is important for them to know. Um and then our, some of our social equity advisory commission initiatives, um as you know, uh we get a lot of support from these guys um on how to message and build events and things like that, and here are some of the top ones that we found this year uh with the most success. I think out of every single initiative, we learned something new, and we were able to kind of go back to our last, our last goal, which is to be able to engage with all of our groups, our minority groups, and specifically our Spanish-speaking groups. Um through these kind of initiatives, they're able to know that we exist and that there's, you know, there's more to it than than I think they felt like, that they feel like they can have someone they can count on um that there's messaging out there specifically for them. Um and then specifically, our IM Summit um video campaign, which is very vital even now nowadays, has even started doing some ads. We've started putting them on social media, uh paid ads just as a campaign to start getting the word out there to feel appreciative of our immigrant community members. Um it's been out for fifteen days, and it's already had six thousand two hundred and eighty-seven people reached. Um and we've been targeting adults eighteen and older um within thirty-five mile radius, and then also Spanish speakers. And we've had some great comments on there um as well. Um and then the Rec Center event, the Mexican consulate, which was huge, Hispanic Heritage Month. Um and there are diversity awareness month, so we, all sorts of different things. Um and as we work through every initiative, we kind of learn new things um that we wanna do. We, through the Mexican consulate, we learned about, which is, we already knew, but we, it was a good reminder to know that not a lot of our community members even read in Spanish, and so knowing that we have to work on how do we communicate in all sorts of accessibility and making sure they get the message as well um has been great awareness, and we we're very excited to what we can do in two thousand twenty-five.
So um something that's coming up for us is a new chatbot on our website. It says end of twenty twenty-four, most likely will be early twenty twenty-five, just because of the holidays and all that kind of stuff, but um cities like Denver, Aurora, and Colorado Springs are already using the same chatbot that we were planning on using. We got a CIPA grant, which was really great. We worked with Chris from IT and Aubrey, um our grant administrator. And um it is AI-powered. It'll be translated into a bunch of different languages. And basically, it will be on all of our owned websites and crawl the websites, looking for the answers that people are searching, and it'll hopefully help them search a little bit better on our websites, as well as um they can sign up for texts, and that is why it will be replacing TextMyGov. And then something else that is coming in early twenty twenty-five is our new residence landing page. This is something that you guys kind of sparked in us. Um it came from your guys' direction with targeting new residents and second homeowners. Um it's super early stages. It is live under community. If you are interested in checking it out, we will bring it back um for some feedback. Uh we already took it to a subcommittee with social equity, and they gave us a little bit um of feedback there, so we've already implemented a few things. And something that's not on this one is the um transportation resources, yeah. So we added a transportation thing. Um and so that'll be a discussion in twenty twenty-five. Um something that we thought would be beneficial for you guys to know is how we pitch to the media and how, you know, um we pitch big stories to the media. We focus a lot on the press releases, and we use a lot of our database with like our e-notifications and our own contact lists. So we really try to get it in front of um the different news outlets that are local, and if it makes sense, not so local. Um and then, you know, if it is a big story, we don't typically put our press releases on our social media, but we do post about what is happening. Um and then we did include some examples as to some of our more successful ones that have made it into news outlets. And I think that's all we have.
Any questions?
Questions?
I wanted to say, the new team has done such an incredible job, and I know Helen started by saying this presentation is a mix of trying to capture metrics that we can truly see how we're doing, how we're improving. But I think it's worth noting, I mean, especially Flor, who I work with from Social Equity, but I know all of you do so much from a community outreach perspective, more of that grassroots, like hosting events, leveraging the networks of our trusted nonprofits, other organizations to amplify a message. So I know government communications is tough, but I think I've heard from the community that there's definitely been an improvement and appreciate all of your work. Um couple, just small comments. Um if this is gonna be a quarterly presentation, it might be worth capturing those events that we hold, all the mayor talks. The first Friday event last week was so successful, so just we're um we're learning what is really reaching the community, what are wins and successes, so if there's any way to to capture those, maybe I think that would be great to know. Um I think the new resident page is wonderful, and it might be worth wherever it fits, I forget if there was a contact or communications tab, just including how they could email council, putting in the mayor or council at Town of Breck email. But otherwise, great work, everyone. Thank you.
But not questions.
Questions? Comments?
Comments? Can I have plural comments? I know I used to give a lot of feedback about the facility notifications at the Rec Center and I really appreciate getting those emails well ahead of time. I think, I know, just echoing what Carol said about kind of doing the events. I think things like that mobile consulate are so huge for this community because it's so hard for people to get to those locations to be able to do those documents and paperwork and everything. So I would love to encourage and brainstorm about more things like that that we could offer. And I don't know if this group was directly responsible, but I love the new memo template that everyone's using for the meetings, that, that check the boxes telling us like what is coming up in the memo. I find that like just really helpful to make sure that we stay on track.
Love the water messaging.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I guess one question. I'm curious, is there any potential or have you done any like cross branding? Like adding like the water messaging in the Race Breck emails? Like if you're notifying about like, say, the Imperial Challenge or the Firecracker fifty, has there been any of that? Do you think there's an opportunity there?
Somewhat. We do, we actually do a lot of, for example, we do a lot of Friends of Breckridge Trails with the Race Breck audience. So we do a little bit of that, but yeah, that's a great opportunity.
Was just curious because there's so many email addresses there.
And actually, you know, you'll see in the Rec Center. So in that digital signage, you'll see all the plastics messaging and the water messaging. So we do do it, at least within the facilities.
Yeah. Thanks for the great work.
Thank you.
Really excited about the successes with the Rec Center and the sustainability message. I know that was a heavy lift with a lot of the things that happened in July with the plastics and, and all that. So I really appreciate all the efforts and it really goes to show what the department can do when they have a project in front of them. The AI and the new resident portions are really exciting to see where that goes. I'm curious to see if we're asking the question of how our residents, our workforce, our second homeowners wanna be communicated with. I know that looking at this, we rely very heavily on social media. I understand that that's kind of the low hanging fruit. It's probably the least cost prohibitive. It's the one out there, but what percentage of our residents, our workforce, our second homeowners is that reaching? You know, and, and I think that's something that we should, we should have that data and, or find out that data so that we can figure out what other ways we can reach that other percentage that social media doesn't get to. You know, is it through a, through texts? Is it through email? I think social media and word of mouth is really, is really great. But I don't think it's the only methods that we should be relying on and I'd just love to know. You know, when we look at the subscribe or get connected page, how, how is that coming along? Are we getting interest on there? Is there any way to figure out what percentage of our residents we're actually able to hit when we'd like to? I'd love to continue on the, the successes of recreation sustainability and start doing more cross-departmental work with Public Works, with planning, with open space, with the police department, and figure out how we can take council goals or staff or town initiatives and frame them for those other departments. An example of that would be like the upcoming Dark Sky Initiative. Right now there is, although Julia's doing an amazing job with the outreach, there is a perception that we're kind of shoving this down people's throats for next July, where I think it would be folks like you who'd be able to craft that message as a, you know, all for one, one for all kind of thing where, hey, we're doing this thing for, you know, this Dark Sky certification for our residents, for our workforce, for our second homeowners and for our guests. And we need you to be part of this effort with the town. And instead, it, it feels like a very us versus them kind of thing. And so we'd love to see the Communications Department involved with those cross-departmental examples. I could see a perhaps a desire to have a, have some, bring in some help to, you know, with a pinpoint, like a laser focus of how to reach, you know, more of our residents, more of our workforce, more of our second homeowners, how to come up with templates for each of those departments to use on, on messaging. If that was of interest, I think that would be something that would be very advantageous. I'm sure there is best practices out there that we can use. In, in the communications, I think that, you know, you, I kind of broke it down into like five different areas that we, we would like to address. You know, one is like urgent information and public service announcements, you know, red flag days of, you know, asking people to join us in the effort to limit cars in, in town on those really, really, you know, those thirty really busy days of the year or snowstorms. We would also, you know, showcasing community wins would be another section where showcasing awards and, and really be an advocate for ourselves of the, the good work that's being done. Gaining momentum for community or town council goals, like I spoke about with the Dark Sky Initiative. And then advocate for citizens. We, we talked a lot about that already with social equity. And then finally, community feedback of how to engage more of our residents in surveys and where we're looking for feedback on the, on arts and cultures, on towns, on trail signage. I know on the, for example, on the trail signage, we didn't get as much feedback as we wanted to on the surveys. And we're looking forward to hopefully seeing better results with the arts survey. But so there's some thoughts, last couple is we'd really like on our emails to council of having some actual dialogue with the person that's messaging us. And that could fall on us or if, if not, instead of just saying, you know, we reply with, your message has been shared with staff and council. It'd be nice to be able to get back to the people that take the time to email us with a thoughtful message of this is what's happening. This is what's I get done with it. And again, if that needs to come from, from here, that's, that's fine too. But it'd be nice to, to have that in place so that our residents feel heard and our guests.
So first, first, the first email that goes back is just like, we received this and we, we've passed it on to whatever Public Works or whatever. But then they do follow up. That was something we talked about a couple of years ago.
Follow up with those. And I think one of the things that would probably be helpful that Steve mentioned is you don't necessarily need to see the responses on all of them because some of them are just, you know, back and forth trying to figure out a problem. But in things like, you know, the McCain emails, where you have a lot of the similar, the same kind of emails. We had, you know, a, a response to that that might have been helpful for you all to see. So when it seems appropriate, we'll include the response. So you see that we are in fact responding and how we're responding to those folks.
I will have to add as well for the cross-departmental area, we are working on that. So we're currently working. We started with our open space and trails, our recreation. We're working on a forum so that it's totally not ready to be pushed out quite yet to everyone. But we're working on a forum where people could engage with us or add us to their team of how do we get an initiative like the Dark Skies as well? And we're also working with Julia and her team on that as well. So we are working on that. We are working on a way of how, how can they reach out to us? And how can we help with all sorts of messaging? And with the dark spot, dark sky specific one, we are working on a way to, how do we educate? But how do we also make it lively? How do we change the narrative and the messaging that seems to be felt as currently? How do we make that a little bit more lively and happy and education wise? And how do we engage our community? So I think we are definitely working on that and we're excited next year to be able to do more as we kind of, you know, since we're a little newer, how do we start getting those relationships? And we're always welcoming people or departments to come to us and ask for help if they ever need anything, ideas, or just wanna talk through things or they need us to create content. We're more than happy to do that as well. I think I, I appreciate your comments and how do we, how do we research, how to, how to engage with community, how to reach community members? I think from the Spanish speakers' point of view, I think we did, social media is huge and I think we can see it with what we're doing. So yeah, definitely. I, I agree with that because like we can see an example of that with our Spanish speakers who, who with the social media is the way we contact them. And it has proven to be great and it has proven to be a great source. So yeah, I just wanted to put that out there that we are working on it. And there's definitely things where we wanna see and grow on in two thousand twenty-five. So thank you, Jay.
Flor, do you know if any of the other towns or the county have a Spanish Facebook page as well?
Not that I know of. I think they also all, well, Town of Silverthorn is, I think the only other one that does Spanish content. And they also use their main page and they do dual language. They do do a lot more direct posts where they will post directly on the Summit Latinos Group directly in Spanish, which could be something that we thought about doing in the future, especially if there's some messaging that's very specific to them. So they don't do kind of like the dual there. They post when it's very specific, who they wanna reach, they just do it all in Spanish.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something?
No, I think everybody's covered it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And Jay had lots of good ideas. So we'll look forward to your next presentation and see what else is going on. Thank you. The Breck Golf Club Annual Review. Then we'll do a break.
I'm good.
You're okay?
No, yeah.
No.
Sorry.
Hello, welcome.
Hey, good afternoon. Everyone, thank you for having us today. First things first, we would have brought hats, but these guys sold them all this year. So next year. Anyway, I thank you for the opportunity to, to give our annual review today. Introductions here, Grant Johnson's, this guy here, for cases and names, I think most of you know him, but our golf and Nordic manager. All things golf property, everything inside that perimeter fencing grant is responsible for, both summer and winter. Rob Cannon, our head golf professional. Mostly focused on golf operations. He also has a lot of maintenance knowledge and certainly from that golf pro side of things. So these guys make it all happen and they're, they're a wonderful addition. Rob started working for us in March. Grant was promoted into his position in February. And then going back a little bit, Errol Miller and I worked a lot on strategic visioning and so forth for the golf course. For this two thousand twenty-four season, we, we started that process and about this time last year, actually a little earlier, last fall and early winter. These guys are the ones that made it all happen. Errol's retired. I've got a fairly big department to take care of. So these guys made it happen and they are really, really good at what they do. Wanted to bring them in front of you today so that they could highlight some of our, some of our successes this summer. And when they're done, we will be happy to take questions, comments or feedback. Thanks again for having us.
All right. I'll start us off here. Thanks, everybody, for letting us be here today. Really excited with the, the success that we had at the golf course this year. Starting out with financially, overall revenue exceeded expectations basically across the board. We ended up surpassing three million dollars in greens fees for the first time ever, which was pretty surprising. And we did over thirty-four thousand rounds of golf this summer. So it was busy to say the least, which was a very good thing. We ended up coming in about over four hundred thousand dollars over in our revenue budget and under about a hundred thousand dollars in expenditures. So net, it worked out that we're gonna be adding about a half million dollars to the golf fund for two thousand twenty-five that we weren't anticipating when we did our budget. So thrilled about that. Some of the capital projects that we worked on this summer. We installed the new perimeter fence along the Beaver Course. The old fence was some of the original fencing. It was all rotten and starting to fall apart faster than we and our maintenance team could repair it. So we identified that last season as something that we wanted to do. So we, we ended up executing that and along the entrance road. So we got a lot of great comments that people saw the new fencing and thought it looked really classy for sure. We also resurfaced the cart paths on the Beaver Course in the fall. The car paths had been overlaid one other time since they were original in nineteen eighty-five. So they were getting pretty bad in a lot of places. People driving around, their drinks spilling, you know, when they're driving in car paths or in the carts. So that was a great project. The final product looks fantastic. So we're really pleased with the outcome of that project. And we plan to do the same thing on the Bear Course in two thousand twenty-five with the fence replacement, placement in the car paths. And then on the L Course potentially in two thousand twenty-six. We just finished up an exterior stair renovation project on the clubhouse. Our back stairs were really steep and slippery. We had identified a safety issue in the past, especially during the winter season. So that project just got wrapped up. They're about twice as wide and a much longer run railing down the middle. And it looks, we're really pleased with the, the projects that we were able to, to complete this year. Some more of our other goals for the season were to increase communication and community engagement. And we were really pleased with our ability to do that this summer. They already highlighted our increased social media use. We got a lot of great feedback about our Instagram following. And we posted two to three times a week. We made it fun. We changed up the things we were posting. So we got good feedback on that. I also started creating a new newsletter that we were sending out to our customer base. And that was a monthly newsletter and it was just highlighting what things were happening at the golf course, what things were coming up. You know, highlighting tournaments, highlighting maintenance. We got a lot of positive feedback about that. People were coming up to us just saying, you know, this is great, like this. We feel so much more in the loop than what's going on at the golf course than we have in the past. And then we also created a new golf advisory committee this year, consisted of us three, the superintendent Alex Sessel and then six of our community members. And the goal of that committee was to really help garner their feedback. They were the eyes and ears of our community, the golf community members. And they would bring issues to us to basically discuss, you know, whether it's course conditions, the restaurant, capital projects, men's league, women's league, things like that. So we were really pleased with the way that that committee went this year. And we're gonna have the same committee members return next year as well. So it's gonna be a two-year term for those we've decided going forward. As far as course conditions this year, the golf course was exceptional. Really, really good. This was my twelfth summer at the golf course and I'd have to say that it was up there, if not one of the best conditions I've ever seen out there. The greens are really good. We had very little winter damage. And that's a product of the lesson, the hard lessons that we learned in two thousand nineteen when we had the ice damage on the greens. So our new practice is just removing the snow in the fall when we get these storms and then it warms up until it, until it's cold enough that that snow is not gonna melt and form ice. So we've currently removed the ice twice this fall and now we think we're good, hopefully. Yeah, hopefully it stays cold. But a, a big kudos due to the maintenance staff. They did a fantastic job. The new superintendent Alex Sessel did a great job executing our established maintenance practices. And for the first time in a long time, the maintenance staff was fully staffed since, first time since the pandemic. I'd say we were super short-staffed for a number of years. So they actually had the resources available to, you know, not only just maintain the course, but do the extra stuff, taking care of details and all the little things that really matter and make a difference to the, the golfers. And then just some of the environmental things that we, we focused on this year, we were recertified as Um, and then just some of the environmental things that we we focused on this year. We were recertified as a cooperative sanctuary through Audubon International. Course has been certified in that, or since nineteen ninety-four, I want to say, and we get recertified every three years. Um, and to do that, we have to provide numerous things such as our chemical and fertilizer application logs. Uh, we do wildlife inventories. We do water testing from water coming into the property and leaving the property, making sure that there's no heavy metals, nitrogen and phosphorus levels are um not changing. Um, so we're we're really pleased to to continue that and re be recertified in that. Um, this summer, we also spent a good amount of time, a lot of extra time uh with noxious weed control uh with oxide daisies, yellow-toed flax, thistle. We did a wide wide variety of control methods and including like when it was rainy, we would send crews out and just be pulling those oxide daisies um and false camomile. So we know that's all highly visible to people and people are very aware of that. So it was important to us to make a a good effort on that part, and we're going to be continuing those efforts going forward too. Um, and the last project that we were really pleased about is uh we partnered with a company called Free Range Beehives. And we introduced three colonies of honeybees to the property. Uh, we located them in a native area away from play. Um, had about forty to forty-five thousand honeybees, um, which we all know is very beneficial to add pollinators to our ecosystem, and you know, of course, you're adding that, you you hear of forty-five thousand bees, and you're just like, oh, my God, that's a lot. I didn't notice an increase at all. I didn't see a single extra bee out there being like, wow, we really, what did we do? And then, you know, like going into that too, we were very aware that maybe some people might be, I have some concerns about that, and we communicated all of that, and I didn't hear anything negative back from the community, and we actually held a outreach seminar, um where probably was attended by about twenty, twenty-five people where the beekeepers came in themselves. And they pulled the the queen out of the hive, and they basically um explained all the benefits um that they have to our ecosystem and, you know, basically answered questions to the community. Um, it was very well received, and uh like I said, I hadn't heard anything negative about it. And again, we're just really pleased. Um, those bees are establishing this this year, so we didn't harvest any of the honey. We're just letting them be, so it'll be interesting to see how they survive the winter. You know, we're we're really excited about that. And then once they um establish themselves and start making honey, we're actually going to be harvesting that and selling it as Breck Organic Honey um out of our pro shop, so.
We'd like next year.
Yeah.
Forget the hat.
We'll give you each a jar for Christmas, so. Yeah. So that's where I think I'm going to end on that part, but thanks for that.
Yeah, thanks, Grant. And um, yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council for having us today. It certainly was a very exciting golf season. Um, I'd certainly like to highlight some of our programs and operations that we had this summer that were highly successful. Um, to start off our men's and our ladies league, I think one thing that we're, that we were extremely proud of is every upper blue and Brecken and Breckenridge resident or homeowner uh that applied to our men's or ladies league, we were able to accept their application and not turn them away. Um, not only that, but we also increased our tee times for both of those programs uh so that we didn't have to deny anybody on a weekly basis. So we didn't have to manage a waitlist for men's league or ladies league. Essentially, every week uh anybody that applied to play, we were, we were able to accommodate that request, which was, which was really amazing. Uh, and overall, we had approximately three hundred uh participants in both our men's and our ladies league combined, which is pretty awesome. Um, moving forward, we'd like to, you know, as we've reassessed kind of both of those programs, we'd we'd like to continue to kind of grow those, and you know, we did have to turn away some applications from outside of Breckenridge and that Upper Blue Valley. Um, but we'd like to be able to accept those applications from full-time residents of Frisco, Silverthorne, and and Dylan moving into next season. Uh, something I'm very proud of that we were able to do this summer as our head golf professional is um how successful we were with our lesson programs. Uh, we taught well over two hundred private lessons this year, and we actually almost doubled our projected uh revenue budget just for private lessons. Uh, with that, we also saw a a major increase in our clinics as well. So our adult clinics grew by twenty-one percent. Um, and our junior clinics grew by seventy-one percent. Um, so, you know, we're still looking how we can recreate and kind of reimagine those programs to kind of fit what we've got going already with our very busy operations at the Brett Golf Course, so that we can continue to see that trend uh in participation. Overall, I think, I think our locals were very happy. We uh increased our local blocks for tee times, because that's something since COVID, the golf industry has gotten so popular. Uh, obviously, very aware that we've gone away from offering the golf pass. Um, but we increased those local blocks by twenty-five percent and added twenty-two hundred extra local tee times. Um, which definitely eased the burden, I think, on our end from receiving some negative feedback from our locals, so definitely a lot of positives. I think the only day of the week that was difficult for locals to play was on Wednesdays, which was men's league when there was already a hundred and sixty locals playing on Wednesday anyways. Um, so definitely super excited about that. Um, you know, one focus we have moving into this winter is really engaging our community with the golf simulator that we have at the clubhouse right now. Uh, so last fall, when I came on, um, we started giving lessons out of the golf simulator, which has been pretty popular. Uh, but we're currently in the process of designing a simulator golf league for the winter time. So we're looking for registrations for that to open actually in the month of December, and to start that simulator golf league in January. Uh, it is definitely a trial run for us. Um, there's all different kinds of information on how to run a golf simulator league. So again, seeing what's going to fit for us and our community is really what this winter is all about, but again, we're excited to keep the community excited and engaged with golf year round as opposed to just in the summertime. Um, the other thing with the simulator, what that allows us to do is it um allows us to offer some golf services to our community year round. One of those would be um I previously mentioned lessons, but also uh golf club fittings and the sale of golf clubs. Um, so one, it's something that we can add to help drive revenue for the golf course, uh but also it's a service where you know, we don't feel like our community members should have to drive down to Denver to the PGA Superstore to buy new golf clubs or get fit or look for that type of merchandise, but we really want to be kind of that year-round center for for golf for our community moving forward. Um, kind of the plans with our operations as we move forward uh is to investigate the possibility of a nine-hole league, and that's something that uh Grant and I received a lot of feedback from our golf community about already. Um, again, as I mentioned, continue to re- recreate, grow and promote uh our adult and junior clinic lessons. Um, as successful as we were with our golf leagues, um, we started this past summer using some intuitive golf tournament management software called Golf Genius. Uh, we're really just in the beginning stages of using that software, so continuing to to um use that software so that that product that our community members have for golf is really first class. Um, and then really, you know, as we move forward, Grant and I kind of have this vision that you know, the Breckenridge Golf Club will be a world-class golf facility that will strive to engage its community to provide opportunities to learn and participate in the game of golf and to offer genuine customer service to guests from all over the world that will create a culture and experience in which community members and guests will want to ex- uh experience over and over. Um, so again, I think we had a really successful summer, but still a lot of work for us to do as we move forward that we're certainly all pretty excited about.
Well, I think you guys are already checking a lot of that vision off the list, so you're doing a wonderful job out there, and we've certainly get a lot of great feedback. In the past, we've gotten some less great feedback, and I think, um, I don't think we got any of that this summer, so I really appreciate all the strategies you guys are using, especially those that get locals out there, but it's absolutely working. So thank you very much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Just five minutes, though.
Thank you very much for coming back. Preservation policy, we've been eagerly awaiting for this, Chris.
I mean, golf is a tough act to follow like this. By all measures, a wonderful golf season at the golf course. But yeah, we're prepared. I got my colleague Jesse here and then Julia here for backup discussing.
He's lonely.
And.
We're not that bad.
No, I think the intent for us is just, we really wanted to kind of this layout, the various issues potentially, you know, I guess the, the consider in kind of a brief history of where we previously were, where we are today, since the, the 2009 adoption. Also make it very clear that, you know, previously there was a pretty extensive public processes to kind of understand what we're, what we're potentially getting into again. If we want, want to move forward with, you know, changes to the existing code. And also look at it through some other lenses other than just home size, just in terms of the energy and some of the other things that are, you know, very quantifiable, but really with that, instead of like having us spend, you know, 15 minutes walking through every issue, I think we really want to hear from the council and hear what the concerns are. What may be the priorities, some of the ideas, obviously, you know, Julia being probably the most experienced from the previous iteration, but both Julie and I and then Mark who's not here today, you know, living through the, the previous iteration. We can provide background of maybe how we ended up here today. We, we did receive one letter from the public from Lee. Which there, I would say there's a little bit of revisionist history in terms of her perception of the, the previous public input. And that's part of the reason why we wanted to document what was done previously. We also did provide the sheet that showed some other communities that have and haven't contemplated the home size across the country. So with that, I'll really be kind of open to the council for discussion.
All right, great. Thank you, Chris. Let's have a discussion about this. Dick, did you want to, do you want to kick us off or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to give it a shot. I, I agree with you, Chris. I think, and I haven't run into Lee yet, but I, you know, I'll chat with her. I didn't, her perception, my perception were very different. I, I felt like there was a tremendous amount of community engagement and a lot of it was negative and which I get, I mean, they're just different, different goals. And we need to consider that, but I also think we need to hear the, maybe the silent, what I view as a more silent majority and, but. I, you know, what kind of hit me when I was reading this and thinking and kind of preparing. Can, can we push some of our sustainability goals to help incentivize people who maybe not do some of the teardowns, maybe not build them quite as big. And ideas, what I mean by that is when somebody's trying to get a demolition permit, do, do we set some pretty high standards around what they're doing with the materials they're tearing down and really help use that maybe as a test ground for some of our construction recycling, construction materials recycling and, and really, you know, if you want a demo permit to tear down an existing home, you know, you're going to kind of help us drive this construction recycling, construction material materials recycling program. And yeah, it might cost some, cost more, you know, but it's important to us and, and you know, that's a tremendous amount of material going into the landfill. And yeah, so that's a thought. You know, I don't want to get too micro because there are a lot of pieces to it. The other one would be kind of the same with energy use. You know, we see it's exponential as they get bigger and bigger and bigger. So as they get bigger and bigger and bigger, I, maybe our expectations need to get bigger and bigger and bigger around our sustainability goals exponentially bigger and bigger and bigger. And kind of let the free market drive some of it. And then kind of to the, I, I still think there's opportunity to work with the setbacks, height, glazing, particularly glazing, because it has gotten so much more popular and and, and really make some of these larger structures that are maybe on bigger lots, just, just orient and fit better. Maybe, maybe some of them will have to shrink due to some of it, but that, that I, I think really having the right, right house, the right orientation, the right size on the right lot, which, you know, sounds easy, but I know it's hard, but I think we can make some real strides with that being our goal around setbacks and, and height and that kind of thing. So there's, there's some thoughts to kind of get the discussion going.
That's great.
Who wants to follow? Maybe for contact setting, thanks for laying out all the public engagement in the past, but maybe closer even Dixon term involved in the conversations in the past. What, you said there's a lot of negative comments. What were they? What were they coming from? Or, but what was, what were their comments? What were they concerned about?
Concerned that we were really hurting the free market by just going towards more of a a size limit, you know, as opposed to some of the intricacies that I think we're looking at now. I, I, it wasn't super involved firsthand. I mean, I certainly was on council then. But I did pay attention to it and came to a meeting or two, I think. So, because I was in favor of it then. You know, it came from a lot of the people that, that make the living, you know, building and selling large homes and and it was, I think centered around their ability to continue to thrive and grow. Their since they perceived it. I personally think we can help them grow their livelihoods more in the long term by getting this right. As opposed to just letting them be bigger.
Yeah, I, I think the, the piggyback on Dick's comments, I think some of it was in the beginning, they didn't know. There really wasn't, just when they're, we're coming out with the term home size and not even saying what maybe the size range would be, there was some fear of, you know, existing homeowners in the neighborhood that they had maybe a smaller structure and then their neighbor had a significantly larger and there was to be a wasn't to be equitable in terms of like the size, like if they're to be locked in and being in a, I, I wouldn't say anything is a small house, you know, there maybe is one or two, but most are like a generous house versus a large house. And they felt like maybe they would miss their opportunity to go, go bigger because, you know, actually the largest homes in the neighborhood were developed pre, you know, 2009. So there was such a range. I think some people are fearful. They couldn't, you know, put in addition or have something if they, you know, invested their money, bought something that was kind of a fixer-upper and then wanted to have, you know, a, a, a larger home, not even necessarily a large home, just to have the opportunity. So I think it was based on just the fear of the unknown to a certain extent. And then there's other people that just really would prefer, you know, no regulation of any kind.
And I'm seeing more people that are open to both sides now. And I had a neighbor that wanted to have coffee and sorry to continue talking, but who, who were relatives. They bought a home a couple of years ago. They have family, they live and work here. Their intent is at some point to either expand their home or scrape it and build a larger home in the, on the site, which the site can handle a little more. The house next door, we've already seen the plans. It's massive. It's just another scraper massive home and they're really concerned about it, you know? They're like, we don't want to do that. We don't want that in our neighborhood. And yeah, we intend to do something with this house, but as I described, kind of some of the directions where we seem to be headed. They're like, yeah, that very much fits what we want to do. So.
Yeah. And I think even that's a good point because within the, it's hard to lump all even scrape offs and there, there's, there's ones that are perfectly reasonable.
Well, this started as a cabin. I mean, it's, it probably.
You know, where. Have a very old, you know, kind of home that isn't, that's kind of at the end of its life and people just want to upgrade, you know, to the property. And then there's other ones, other people look at at just completely maximizing it anyway. So it's really hard to characterize like all even homes that are to be scraped under the same umbrella. So.
Yeah, it'd be a good segue. Um, I actually had a pre-application meeting this week with Chris and the team. Um, we've hired an architect. I will probably be, hope to be one of the scrapes in the Weishorn here in the spring. Intend to do that under the current guidelines and have applications submitted here kind of around the, the beginning of the year. You know, and I, yeah, I would love to hear, I think some definition around the goal and, and kind of understand what we're working towards for, you know, any future changes to the code. And then, yeah, just kind of understand what we're trying to accomplish with, you know, any work that we do through multiple work sessions or public forums. So I think that'll be valuable to, you know, and it's interesting, right? Like you, you drive down roads in the Weishorn and there's certainly homes that have a really nice presence relative to say it may be a main thoroughfare. And then there's other homes that maybe have a little bit more of an imposing presence. And so, yeah, I'd like to understand if, if that's one of the goals and, and what other pieces in there, I think, you know, define success. I think that would be valuable. And yeah, I, I, I think before going into too many meetings, I, yeah, I think it's really valuable. What are we trying to accomplish with our time by, by opening this up?
Yeah. So maybe people can structure their comments if we're just going right into comments, which I think is fine, questions and comments mixed together. But structure it like, um, just kind of what Todd was talking about, how he definitely agrees with, you know, not them be, not being imposing. So maybe one of the things that you would agree with is like, yeah, maybe we should be looking at setbacks because that really does kind of change the feeling of the neighborhood, you know, when you're walking through. So maybe if you can, when you're starting to talk about with your comments in mind, structure them around some of the things that Chris has given us as far as, you know, I really like the idea of increasing setbacks or reducing the coverage. Or, you know, what we allow for property development, the coverage percent cover. Or energy consumption, whatever, but maybe just so that we can have some hope of tracking this conversation into uh, what we're agreeing with and what we're less agreeing to pull with. You want to do that, Steve?
I do. Of all, I, I think I want to say that I think we should be addressing this issue. And I think Dick started down the exact correct path with looking at this from a standpoint of sustainability. And what we're trying to do with that in the town, both from demolitions, electrification. I was stunned by the statistic of the increase in electrical usage, energy usage with the growth of the homes. So I'm going to, for the benefit of the council, I'm not just feeding it back from Chris. I asked him some questions so I could wrap my mind around this. If you look at the information the planning department gave us, we're way out of whack with respect to Vale and Aspen. So we shouldn't be embarrassed at all about thinking about this, you know, the two places of the home of the trophy home. And, you know, we're, we're not even in the ballpark with controlling size the way they are. So I asked Chris about, well, just what kind of an issue is this? He told me that their information indicates that there are 40 homes in the Weishorn neighborhood that are 3,000 square feet or less. And that was kind of what I was looking for because those to me are probably the homes that are most likely to be scraped. There are. Let's see.
How many homes total?
There's 135.
And 40 of them are.
Yeah, there, it's almost broken down in pretty even thirds between, um, let's see, I have my, my notes here. Sorry. 36 homes that are over 5,000 square feet, which is 26%. It's 40 homes less than 3,000. And then, so the remaining 44% is between that 3,000 and, and 5,000 square feet kind of in the.
Is square footage or all square footage, including garages? Just curious. Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yep, including below grade.
So.
We don't regulate.
I, I think when we're looking at the possibility of 40 scrapes and that doesn't count bigger homes that might be scraped, it's worth looking at because pretty soon we're built out and then the only way you're going to get your lot is to buy and scrape if that's what you want. I then took this information and I compared it to my neighborhood, the Highlands Park neighborhood. And we have very strict rules about size. And our rule is that a home shall not exceed 20% of the area of its lot up to a maximum of 7,000 square feet. So that's all taken care of, well below uh, what's allowed in the Weishorn, Weishorn in an area where my six tenths of an acre lot is the absolute smallest lot in the subdivision. And it is the average size of the lot in the Weishorn. So we're still, we're, we're looking at homes there that can be way bigger than they're letting be built on two acre lots in the Highlands. And I think that also justifies why we, we should be looking at this. I agree that we need to be looking at the tools in our toolbox that already exist, looking at roof lines, looking at glazing. One thing that as a planning commissioner really aggravated me is people who wanted positive points for landscaping after they scraped all the landscaping off their lot. I don't think there should be any points awarded for landscaping of positive nature if you're the one who created the problem. And, you know, it was two of the easiest points anybody could get that then offset a bunch of heated driveway or other sins that they wanted to have. So I think there are things we can do. Uh, we had a work session where we talked about, you know, how are we going to maybe require recycling of the demolished materials? And maybe there's a fee that goes along with that. And maybe there's other ways of tying in the sustainability of what we want in our town as it relates to these scrapes. So I'm more than happy to engage in the community on this issue. I think with a clear head and a clean conscience, I can talk about the positives of dialing this down a little bit and taking some control of it. And making sure that the home fits where it's going to fit. Uh, so yes, did I answer the questions that you wanted me to answer?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification?
Please.
So we're talking about, or just make a clarification, I guess. We're not necessarily talking about just one neighborhood. We're really talking about all neighborhoods or all subdivisions that don't currently have
Building level.
Building envelopes, right? Okay. All right. Just want to clarify because I know there's a lot of focus on one neighborhood, but I do want to be sure that we're all aware that we're really talking about all the, yeah, all the.
Focused on that one neighborhood because it's the got the most activity.
Yeah, no, agreed. I just want to, just want to make that clarification.
And I think actually there's a further question. If
Yeah, I.
You want to expand even to neighborhoods with envelopes, showing that now that the difference now that we are at a higher level of buildout and there isn't a radical difference between the homes with envelopes and the homes that do feature, you know, in terms of.
It's a good point, Chris.
So I, I think that's a fair question, but I think that's a good way to, to kind of ground the conversation. But, I mean, I think for illustrative purposes, like obviously this is the neighborhood where I think people are most familiar with and, and with some, some of the trends. And with that, like, you know, I guess we'll continue on with comments. There's, I, I guess at a certain level, you know, from us living this with the current NPP for 15 years and then just looking at development in a lot of different neighborhoods, you know, throughout town for even longer than that. I, I think that, you know, you can focus on height or, or even square footage, but I, I guess at a certain level, I discourage from getting into very specific design elements because that can have unintended consequences as well. Like when we start, you know, when you look at neighborhoods to implement sometimes things like bulk plane, then every house has the same step back at the same point. And um, I'll just use an example from our historic district to highlight, highlight that. Um, if you look at every addition, it goes on. At some point people started doing the rough saw and materials to try and mimic. And that wasn't necessarily how it reads in the code. But eventually that was precedent and now that is replicated all over and it's. And it's kind of put everything into a very specific design for every addition on the historic structure or even a nonhistoric. And that maybe wasn't the original intention. And instead of having like something that was probably unique, I'm guessing Janet probably came up with as a unique design. Now that's almost kind of considered mandatory and, and kind of ties the hands. And isn't actually a traditional style that we saw in the historic district.
I feel the same way about the connector. I feel like that is just, so every single one has the same dimension.
So I guess like, very early on, I would say, you know, maybe try and control what you think is absolutely necessary and allow architects to still have some ability to design interesting houses that aren't, you know, to the standards that are sometimes dictated by HOA in the neighborhood that's never had an HOA.
Which is one of the benefits of the Weishorn, in my opinion, is it's the variety, there's no HOA that dictates. You know, let, let it, let people do the thing.
And, and, and I think in some of the neighborhoods where they had, I'm using Highlands Park as an example. One of the reasons I think they were concerned about above ground there, even though the lots are more generous, is there's almost no vegetation. So every, every house, and we, it's not the intent to over vegetate because that's traditionally kind of sagebrush and a, a completely different, um, vegetative type than you would find in the Weishorn or what you would find in the first filings of the Highlands where it's more treed. So I, I think that was one of the things is you have these homes that are, you know, adjacent to the golf course or there's a lot there even on ridgeline was the limit that above ground square footage. That was some of the thought process and in having it there versus other ones that may be built more into, um, a forest. So I don't think that, just using one example of a pretty unique neighborhood from a vegetation perspective, should necessarily influence other neighborhoods that are completely different in terms of the landscape.
Good point. Marika, do you want to go?
Um, my only ideas were similar to Dick's, so I will just leave it, leave that there. But, um, I do agree with just about everything Steve said. Um, I would encourage some sort of setbacks or restriction on overall size on a lot. And you made some really good points, but we don't, we certainly don't want to over, over manage what can actually be constructed, but that's, that's all I have for now.
In this, I was trying to read through this, I was trying to come up with a good analogy of what limiting the, just coming out and saying, this is your maximum square footage of, that your house can be. And nothing seemed appropriate enough or, or appropriate for that matter. But, um, I just, I think that I am in favor of all the, um, levers that are available to us. Sons maximum home square footage. I think that is something that rings a bell, that's a little like of just stinks of heavy-handedness and, um, and overstepping is saying, all right, your house cannot be bigger than six thousand feet or whatever, or five thousand feet. Where I think the goal is to decrease the perceived mass of the structures. And in doing that, I think that we can artificially decrease the square footage to be appropriate for the lot by increasing setbacks, by increasing open space percentages, decreasing glazing, um, uh, percentages of the, the sods. Um, amount of, you know, setting an amount of roof line at the maximum height so that we don't have a flat roof that is covering the, the same square footage of the, um, the footprint of the home all at the height maximum, but it has to be a pitched roof. By bringing into, uh, shadow restrictions that, um, you know, taking account how the, how the structure casts a shadow. These are all things that are guidelines and, and, and that can be, that are in codes in, in Florida and in Austin and that we can use to make the house more appropriate for the lot. And, um, I would just, uh, uh, just for some reason, I think that we have had pushback in the past because of the, um, coming out and saying, this is how big your house can be. Versus going, we're going to have, um, regulations in our code that are to decrease the hot size of the house for, or the size of the structure for the appropriateness of the lot. I think that becomes more palatable and more suitable. And I think that now that we have, I, I feel like I've been banging this drum for years of the need to address some of these issues. And it, I, I think now that there is a, uh, example, uh, that everyone can point to and say, I don't want this. That brings this community more together, that we can bring in architects, builders, contractors and say, okay, we all agree that this is not what we want. How do we get there? And I think there's a lot more of a cooperative effort where maybe fifteen, seventeen years ago, the, um, the thought that some giant, uh, structure that is, you know, a big block that takes up, that is flat and takes up the entire, uh, lot with just the setbacks being there. And where the entire roof line, uh, and the tire footprint is that building, um, height max. I don't know if that was contemplated or, or thought that that could be a reality. And now that it's proven that that could be the future and, and probably will be, I think you can bring people in and, and discuss some of these and get, and have staff be more of a facilitator to that group. Uh, who, who make their living i- in that, those fields and, um, wanting that preservation. So I'd be in, in favor of all the different, uh, options that you set for it.
I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. There's been strong points that we'd to look at, um, feeding off Jay's last comments. I think being site-specific, where we're using our tools to make sure, um, the house fits is less imposing, that we're using the tools we have in our code and also exploring some of the things Jay mentioned. Um, the one thing I would be supportive of is, um, limiting the size outright because I think that energy consumption is a clear nexus and rationale for doing that. So that is something I'm interested in exploring. Um, you mentioned, um, requiring, um, no gas connection or different things you man suggested looking into to mandate at a certain size that could offset it. But I think the energy consumption is a, is an important nexus. Um, I hear the concern with glazing and I agree with it. One thing I'd love to see again, is there a nexus with amount of glazing and energy consumption of the property and something that we could codify through that rationale? Otherwise, I agree with everything I would said. Uh, the one thing we didn't comment on was the lot split. I don't know if we'll export more later or not, but I mean, in general, generally, um, I'm not in favor of that approach. I think some of the lot splits we've seen in town prior to Rose, it's been incredibly difficult for those buildings to meet our code. I know there are lots of discussion in planning commission that I saw in the minutes. Um, so that is not a, not a direction that, um, initially I don't entertain. I think it changes the character too.
Yeah. Um, I am with Carol that just the most important thing to me is the energy use. And so, um, if, I, I don't know, I'm, I guess I was looking at this more as a way to encourage people to not even hook into gas. And so I almost feel like I'd be interested in considering that, um, if you're net zero, you could either have a bigger house or, um, or, you know, not cap that, um, in a little bit hoping that, um, the cost of doing some of that newer technology might limit. But at the same time, knowing that as everyone is moving more and more to those, you know, they're going to be so price competitive that I don't know how limiting, um, it's going to be. So I guess I would sort of rely on the sustainability to team, team to say, um, is this eliminating waste enough? Or is it still, you know, just so unsustainable because they're using so many materials and bringing out so many truckloads of stuff and stone and all the things that we really should limit it. Um, and I'm not, I don't have the answer to that at all. I think I'd just like to look at it kind of holistically. I love the idea of, um, requiring recycling for demo materials. I think that's, or for demo, yeah, for demo. Um, I think that would be huge, um, and it would definitely be impactful because, um, it is very costly as we've learned. So that might be a very, um, that might have just a real direct connection. But I'm generally in favor of just, uh, relying on staff and planning commission to determine roof lines and glazing and not allowing landscaping points and the offset and things like that. Just things that make sense and contribute, that help contribute to the overall character of, um, of the community without being just arbitrarily heavy-handed with things. I think, um, what I would, what struck me in the memo, um, was kind of this next round of public involvement. And I guess I wanted to take the barometer of council. And I think that just based on what people are saying here today, I think most people would, um, support the conversation, just really saying, we're going to do this because of our sustainability goals and because we are very limited in natural gas and we're not interested in putting in that new for infrastructure and paying for that new infrastructure. Can you guys tell us which way to get there? A little more like the, um, pay or the construction. Um, I don't know how many of those Jesse you've listened into, but it's kind of been, it's really similar to the conversation that we've had for what will people support us doing at scrap? Um, you know, and kind of getting everyone on board, um, like we're going to start recycling materials. How do you want us to do it? Which ones do you think are the easiest? And I felt like the building community really came to the table with that. I mean, of course, it's going to be difficult, but there were things that they were super willing to do or even doing already. Um, and I just think, I mean, it's my preference that we let the public know that we want to have some, we have these goals and I'm not a hundred percent sure what the goals are. But hopefully Chris in the next work session would be able to come to us and say, these are the goals that we propose and then asking the community, you know, to which ways are you supportive of getting there? Maybe, maybe people will say net zero and maybe they'd say, I'd rather have a, um, cap of, you know, something, I'm not sure. But my preference is to leave that conversation, not to just leave the door open. Like, what do you think about this? Because I feel like that's just offering to get shot down.
I do want to, um, just m- maybe not put guardrails, but just some cautionary tales around net zero and the size of the home. So as those homes get larger and the energy intensity gets two and a half times more per square foot, it becomes increasingly harder to get to net zero for several reasons. One is that you want design elements that break up roof lines and don't allow for these flat roofs. We also have amenities and programs like REMP that are already taking up roof space with potential offsets. And it just, between glazing and size and, and, you know, potential electrification, um, it, it does become, it, it becomes very difficult. So what other communities have done, Aspen, Pitt King County, Boulder, Boulder County, they haven't limited the home size as much as said, you know, from one to three thousand square feet, you have to meet these energy targets per square foot from three thousand to five thousand. And I'm kind of just throwing out the, the tiers here. But, um, you know, that, that energy, uh, target gets ratcheted down. And when I say energy target, her score or the energy rating, um, index. So as the home gets bigger, you get, you have a tighter building envelope before you put renewables on it. So you make that building as efficient and tight and, you know, effective as possible. And then you add the solar on it. So, so you don't want to leave an opportunity for people to just add solar and still get everything else that they want within the home. Um, and so I will, you know, I, I don't want to just say that net zero is the answer or full electrification is the answer. I do think you set some targets there and the market will dictate what people add. But I wouldn't just want to throw net zero out there as like, this is going to solve the, the problem of the large home. Because it does become very difficult. We've even seen, you know, with the zero energy ready home program and homes of this size, homes are choosing the other pathway in the building code rather than do zero energy ready home for this reason. So we definitely have code that we could look at and, and can emulate. But nobody really, with the exception of Pitt King County, considering a change in the future, no one has these homes like you have to do net zero because of how difficult it actually is. Especially when you add design requirements and that, that conflict with design for solar.
No, they're coming, please do. I, I wonder, do, do we want to have a dual path here? Because I'm feeling some urgency. And if we go through this full processing of engagement, it's going to take a while. Do we want to have a dual path and try to kind of look at glazing, which come, has come up over and over and over? And the landscaping's come up over and over and, you know, we really need to get away from, you're going to clear cut a lot and then get ex, get positive points for putting a small percentage of it back. But, uh, you know, I, I kind of wonder if a couple of these, potential code revisions could be on their own path and try to get them done a little sooner than the full engagement of this, this bigger approach. I don't know how I just feel about that, but I, I'm just feeling a real urgency to, to get a few things done here.
Yeah, I think that's a really strong point. And I think all the elements of code will work together holistically. I don't know how many times glazing and landscaping has come up in our conversation. So I think that's a great idea, Dick.
I would, uh, put in the EV charger, uh, of the points as well. You know, the, those three points are kind of, um, updated in a way, you know, that, uh, yeah, good point, Jake.
Yeah, I think I, you know, I'd love some clear definition of what the real goals are, right? Because I think if minimizing the need for expanded gas service to our community is the goal, right? And that would be a great goal. Um, there's going to be other pieces to how the town operates to achieve that, right? Like this isn't only going to get solved by a few neighborhoods, right? So if that's the goal, then, you know, I, I think there's, there's a lot of value in declaring that goal. And then thinking about the other pieces, like, again, this just isn't the one magic, uh, bullet that solves that. Um, I think if the goal is like, hey, we got concern about the presence of shadows and how homes, scraped homes feel on main thoroughfares. If that's the goal, like, let's declare that so that there's, to me, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. Um, and I think clarity on what the goals are really will help us all work together to bring out that expertise and get the community's input to, to beat those up and get to a, a better place, right? So I, 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 I hope that we don't use sustainability, you know, it's like, hey, if we don't want trophy homes in, in town, well then let's say that and, 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 you know, let's beat that up a little bit. And, and, yeah, so I'd, I'd like some real clarity on what problems we're trying to solve so that we can work towards solving those. And then I think, that's interesting, I'm doing a triplex in Frisco with some partners. And the neighborhood it's in over by the lake has really rigorous guidelines on most things in that neighborhood. Density, the amount of open space where the driveways can go, uh, square footage. And what, what it's done is it's created some funky design. So I think just caution us as we look at trying, let's define what problems we're trying to solve specifically and, and, and not use sustainability as, hey, we don't want big homes. Let's just say we don't want big homes if that's the case. But it's, it's created some poor design. And I think ultimately, our brand and our community, there's some disservice that can occur there if we, we're not thoughtful about what's put in place. There's some disservice that can occur there if we, we're not thoughtful about what's put in place.
So I wonder, um, do you guys feel like from this conversation today that you could identify a few different goals? That the council has brought up and then identify some of the, you know, like. Roof lines and glazing and landscaping in might address, you know, one goal. Whereas some of the sustainability might address a different goal. And then I'm, and then when you bring that back, we could say whether we really. Agree as, you know, whether enough of us agree with each of the goals and then the strategies to get there. Could that be part of the next work session?
So identify goals and.
And some of the like.
Some map the strategies to those goals.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do agree somewhat to what Todd said in terms of looking at it a little bit more holistically than doing it.
Piecemeal?
Doing it piecemeal because I think if, if you. Looked at some of the ones that maybe you do have some objection to. From some of the things that you're pointing to, maybe other in glazing. It would still get through the code even with a more rigorous like. It would be really hard to set a minimum open space target in these neighborhoods because everything's open space on those lot. Like it may seem like you have a big thing, but it's still gonna be eighty-five percent like.
I know, I'm always surprised.
I mean, it's a huge amount and shadows, again, that's, those are design guidelines in a much more urban form. More similar to the historic district. Like you could take the biggest house in the Weishorn and it's not that they cast a shadow. On the neighboring property or one in the Highlands for that matter. So I, I think, I think identifying what is the, the main. You know, objection, it may be like we can't have this type of house ever designed again. But sometimes also by not allowing this one house to be designed again, then you put such tight guardrails that you have. A lot of homes that are, you know, like.
But I think.
Replicates over and over again.
I think everyone on council understands that we're not going to be able to. Really regulate the look of a house and that's not the intent. I think. Kind of what you said in the first part, which is we really need to identify what the goal is. Because I haven't heard anyone really say, oh, there are certain houses I don't like the size of, or I mean, I don't like the look of. It's more the size and then the energies.
Size orientation and, uh. You know. And I'm out of glazing, which affects that.
So maybe less coverage and more setback discussion.
And some of the energy, you know, while you can earn points in the code for doing energy measures, a lot of what you're talking about. Could ultimately end up in the building code. And is regulated by the, the IECC. And so, you know, we'll have to look at like. What is a neighborhood preservation policy versus if you're really focused on the energy piece, it might not be the right spot for it. But rather the building code might be the place to address it.
Yeah, multiple goals. I mean, I think we need to have multiple goals. This, this is, um, this is a complex problem. So, but I, I agree with Todd. I think we need to define them. And I think sustainability is too broad. We need to define within sustainability, what are we trying to accomplish? For me, it's recycling. You know, scraped materials. I think it's. Some efficiencies around energy use, keeping in mind our challenges around gas infrastructure. And then, yeah, it, you know. That would fall under the sustainability piece, but then the house just has to fit on the lot. You know, and, and that is not just size, it's orientation, it's, it's. It's form, you know, not design, but form, you know, perceived mass. And, uh, so I'm not a designer, so. But I, you know, but I, I think our next discussion, I think you're, you're absolutely right, Kelly. Our next discussion should be trying to. Define our goals a little more clearly. Because if we can engage the community. You know, to help us achieve those goals. I think we're, we're gonna be a lot more successful in getting by.
But could you propose some goals? Based on what we've talked about, cause otherwise we're just gonna go in circles.
I, I, in, in some ways, I guess.
I mean, I.
They'd be kind of identified that the issue is, and I think like if we said like. We're not afraid to regulate home size or we're really concerned about if we can check that, check that off or like, I mean, I think glazing is the one that sounds like. Is the universal, like everyone seems like try to, try to address glazing. You know, like trying up the standard of, for energy and other sustainable in recycling. I think those are the three that I think we've heard consistently from, from the group, but some of the other things that we've brought up, I feel like it's kind of been.
I think orientation too. And is that everybody's with head nods? Yeah.
Orientation, I, I'm still not going to be convinced that we don't need to. Regulate the exact home size based upon the size of the lot. If we get to the point where we're saying, all we're doing is, does it fit? That's subjective and what looks like it may fit to you. May not look like it to me or the public. And I think. We're not saying you can't exceed five thousand square feet in a home. I mean, we're, we're in the big numbers already at eight thousand square feet. And if we were to bring that down to say seven thousand, which people are building some pretty. Big looking seven thousand square foot out homes around me. Maybe we're getting more in the ballpark, but I think then you have at least, if the lot is this many square feet. The home can be this big, then we can point to an objective standard. Not a subjective standard which gets us sued because somebody wants to build a house that's bigger and they think it looks fine on the lot.
When we already have that with four area ratios in the Weishorn, I don't know about the other neighborhoods that are being proposed here, but you know, there's a. It's a one to four, so there's a, a scaling there relative to the size. You, you might. You know, driving up and down Wellington might say, hey, we might, that house might be a little close to Wellington. But there's already kind of that, that scaling that's in place for the main neighborhood we've been talking about.
So the question might be, is it right?
The trophy home question, right? Is like, are, are we saying like, hey, seven thousand is just too big for the community? Is that, is that the problem we're trying to solve and that? And I think it's, my opinion is it's, it's on the table here to go to staff and say, hey, we don't like A, B, C and D and. Here's what we're trying to fix and I. I'm hoping for some clarity there so we can all work towards that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think from a staff level of making it functional and also being transparent to the public, we want some things that are a little bit more cut and dry. Than just this subjective where you get seven people, the planning commission to agree to it. And then the council's like, why did they agree to that? Like.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I guess part of it is that you can have a. Five thousand square foot home that, and maybe this goes to orientation, that if placed on the lot. Closest to the, the thorough, the thoroughfare, you feel like you're driving through a city block. And I think that is, would be my ask is, can you put objective goals to. Trying to discourage or not allow. Having looming buildings on either side of you and feeling like you're driving through a city block versus a rural. Neighborhood road. And I think that is, you know, maybe that's perceived mass, maybe that's orientation. Maybe that's home side, whatever, but I think we need to try to quantify what. What it is that needs to be, to change so that, um, and to me it's setbacks, but. Where the structure is, goes straight vertical, right? What it feels like right onto the property line.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's difficult. There's certain lot, just because we obviously have. Very few spots where it's completely flat. So if you have a bigger house, it's below. Street level, it's a read smaller. And if you have one where it's, it's higher. You know, it, it's difficult to say that we're the measure from the USGS from the center line of, of the road, you know, for the same. Setback. I mean, I, I think that a lot of the neighborhoods that were developed with building the servants envelopes, they attempted to do that by. Saying that they had this. Survey of this is where the optimal location, but in retrospect, after you see some of the houses built, like. That didn't exactly pan out even the way that they thought they were doing it when they did a, a site by site. It's not to say that we can't attempt to do it, but I think. It gets really difficult just from the variation of where. Just a lot in the elevations are relative to, to a roadway. And just to try and have something that's so not, you know, like, um, spot zoning lot by lot, which I think we're, you know, been told to stay away from like.
So I think, I think it's fine and I don't, I actually don't think that, um. I want to kind of wrap this up because we have one more thing on the, um. On the agenda for tonight and I don't want to try to solve this tonight because I really think. Staff has a lot of information that they can go back and look into to really bring it back. So one thing I do want to add, you had a list of like four things, glazing and sustainability and something else. But I'm really interested in adding setbacks to that list. Are other people supportive of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. You wanna?
I would like us to consider an absolute. Restriction on any elevation. So we don't have a fifty-five foot roof because of a really steep grade and the way it's measured. And I think we need to, and I don't know the right number. But, you know, on the steep lots, you can build a really big roof from the low side to the, to the, to the edge of the roof. So. I think I would like us to consider a, a, um. Absolute, you know, regardless of the way we're measuring. Have an absolute no roofs over this number on any of the four elevations, regardless of the pitch of the lot.
So for this is, this seems like something that maybe you could look into. And if it doesn't make sense, you can come back and explain why, or you can look into, is there a way to make that work? Do people support them looking into?
Yes.
Okay. So then when we come back, I think the one thing that's really important to Todd, and I think he said it well, is just that. Hopefully this next conversation can be a little more directed in, so that if you could help us kind of figure out what the goals are, we're trying to accomplish. And sort of what, you know. Obviously there's maybe, and maybe it's kind of broken into two. But I think we'd also be very interested, Jesse, in your input on like what sustainability stuff should actually live in the code. Versus what some of these planning conversations would be. And I think that, um, the one final thing is I don't want to lose sight of. What Dick talked about. If there's anything that seems like it should be fast or would, could be fast tracked in this conversation in order to help us start. Start taking steps in this direction.
The one thing that I think you were trying to reference that Chris had mentioned of the four things that he'd already kind of gathered, the other one was recycling of.
Oh, yeah.
Materials.
Yep. And I think everybody agreed with that as well. Does that give you enough, Chris, to sort of hopefully? Come back?
I think so. I guess I'm confused. Are we looking at limiting like bringing down the FAR? And, and I guess the other thing is the scope, are we looking at? Every large lot in town? Are we sticking just with?
Oh, good question.
Of, uh.
I mean, I think I would, I would throw that back to you. Is come back and tell us, it seems like it's something we should be looking at across the town. Or, um, this is why we shouldn't be, this doesn't apply across the town.
I mean, I think from a home size and maybe building height perspective, just to, I mean, since there isn't a huge difference between what's being constructed and. Lots that have setbacks versus building envelopes makes sense. I think. It would be difficult to decrease the setbacks from the established, you know, planted building envelope since. Plat notes supersede anything in our code, but I think everything else other than setbacks could apply to any. Home in terms of potentially FAR. I mean, it would be a, a bigger exercise that. Which would slow down the process to get the correct FAR for those neighborhoods that have building envelopes.
I think, I don't think many of us, a couple of us probably know. Maybe the route forward well enough to say what we would support and not support, but I think mostly. I for sure need another work session to understand what.
And I think that's something we could explain the difference between the envelope and not, and not put you on the spot for that one, right?
That'd be great.
There, there'd be pluses in mind. It would probably slow it down overall.
Okay.
So it would be, we have a ton of research that Julia did from oh nine and we've been able to update it for the lots of setbacks. But we really don't have any baseline data for those.
That makes sense.
We haven't been regulating.
All right. We're relying on you, Chris.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Let's go back, let's talk about golf.
We run that through again? Julia? Pass through the, uh, impact fee.
Mayor Town Council. Great. So. For you today, um, we're looking at amending our impact fee administrative rules. And those are what we refer to commonly as the five A fee rules. In two thousand and six. If you remember back that far, we passed, um, the voters passed ballot measure, it passed a sales tax, but then it also. Passed this, authorized this development impact fee. And this development impact fee is based on a sliding scale. On new construction square footage for both residential and commercial. So it goes up from. Up to two dollars a square foot. It's not a huge fee. In fact, uh, this year to date, we've collected two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars from it. So. Just a little perspective on the fee, but it does go toward our affordable housing. So everything counts. And, um, but looking at those, it did also get. When we looked at the fees admin rules recently, there was some. Language that was confusing and we wanted to clarify that this fee is in perpetuity. So that was really the reason why we wanted to touch these administrative rules. To clarify that, um, cause we did adopt them right after, um, that adoption. Ballot, that ballot language adoption, um, in two thousand and seven. And then, um. Well, we looked at that, we have had some issues with the admin rules since two thousand and seven. And one of those is that we continuously, um, run into the issue with collection of the impact fee. So typically we collect all our fees at the time of building permit. Except this one. So, um. What happens is then people come for their CO, so they're scrambling to get their. Final inspections and wrap everything up and then we're like, hey, you still need to get your. Five A fees paid before you, you go ahead and, um. Get your CL and then it's, it always causes delays on the backend. So, um. We would like to make a change in the admin rules to put that to, um. The time of building permit for the collection. The other change that we wanted to make after talking to Lori with housing. Is removal of the eighty percent AMI that was referenced in here multiple times. That the, you, the units. Should be eighty percent AMI and that is not something that as a community. We see like a consistent need for, we obviously have needs across the board, um, with our administrative rules. So, um. That is the other change we wanted to make. Um, the changing the collection fee. Um, at time of building permit is going to require some outreach to the builders association. Wanted to get your sort of okay on that first though, before we went ahead and outreach to them. So, um, what? So um, what? Our thought process is to outreach to the Summit Builders Association, send out an email. To and put on our website, send an email to our um contractors, let's serve. So all the emails that we have for our contractors. And just kind of let them know that we're going to open up like a four week comment period. Um, and see if there's a whole lot of concerns um, before we actually. Go into full implementation of these admin rules. Um, so that would be our proposal for outreach. Um, and because this is administrative rules, we don't require. A formal adoption from the council, but sort of a blessing that this is okay to go forward. Um, and that's all I have, so if you have questions or concerns. For me, let me know.
Questions for Julia?
My, my guess, I will make comment, my guess is it'll be welcomed by contractors because people are overpaying fees at the end. They get it at the beginning, it costs to get a permit, but at the end it's like, I'm over this, yeah.
Yeah.
The amount of fees, just.
No.
And um.
A language for eighty percent AMI.
Yeah.
The ability to increase these fees.
Voter approved.
True, this has to be voter approved, right?
Okay, any final comments for Julia? All right, so are people in support of moving the timing? Yes. At the beginning of the process and then removing the eighty percent AMI language.
Yes.
Look at that. All right. We are going to move into executive session.
Okay.
Moving locations?
Nope.
What?
We don't have a third party, we don't have a.
No, we don't need to move locations, I don't think. Need to take a break or anything?
I think we're okay.
Okay, um, we may come back out, um, but we will come back out and just let the public know if anybody's online or anybody's present. Um, if there's any decisions to be made, otherwise if I could get a motion under twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B. Um, to receive, for the council to receive legal advice related to potential litigation regarding the block eleven Uler Apartments.
So.
Project.
Jay, Jay made the motion. Um, do I go ahead and take?
Yeah, so we've just seen a vote.
Okay. Um, Steve Gerard?
Here.
Council member Sade. Sorry.
Is that a yes?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a yes.
Yeah. We're just, we're just taking a vote on the motion to move, we also need a second on that, on that motion, okay, great, Todd seconded. So now we just need each council member to um.
I'm gonna start that over.
Okay.
Council member Gerard.
Yes.
I gave you a second chance. Council member Sade.
Yes.
Council member Rankin. Council member Car- Carlton.
Yes.
Council member Page.
Yes.
Council member Beckerman. Owens, yeah.
Great, we will now move into executive session.
All right, we are now back in open session, um, it's five, almost, oh, five forty-four. Um, based on legal, the legal council update, is town council. Um, supportive of filing a legal complaint on block eleven Uler Apartments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and if I could expound just a bit, I appreciate the questions being answered during our executive session, but um. I, I, I'm adamant, yes, because I believe that um. What MW Golden put our workforce through, it is absolutely wrong. These people have lived without heat for two winters now, and we're going into another. Um, this heat in one of the units has never worked. Now we've got a second building that's failed and likely to have a third and. I think we suspect there's going to be infighting between the contractors, but you know what, it's the GC's job. To get a CO and get the thing across the finish line and do it the right way. So we need to humanize this, this argument a bit and talk about. I mean, we invest so much in housing for our workforce. These are really, really important people to our community and what we put them through is absolutely wrong.
Agreed, thank you, Dick. Um, are you in support?
Yes.
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 And I am as well. All right. Um, meeting adjourned, do we want to do?
Say, if you want to move to.
Yeah, we could.
Report.
Early, so we could live and get out earlier. Um, we're gonna go into committee reports. And. Start with the town manager and staff report, but I might end with that today. Um.
She says nothing to add, so.
That's great, well done. Um. Cass and MMC, we haven't had, we, I already reported on that last time, so open space advisory.
Uh, we did have a meeting uh, last Monday and thank you all for who were able to attend, I thought it was really great. Uh, the discussion we had and um, looking through my notes, there really wasn't anything that um. That went, you guys were present for the stuff that. Serial and was relevant.
Can I add one thing? I don't know if Bosec will ever listen to this, but I was so impressed with them and we are really lucky to have. On that commission, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, tourism.
Uh, no meeting.
History?
We had a meeting and I think the main takeaway is they want to. Take some time to work through the mini mine proposal and beat that up a little more and so stay tuned, that one's I think. Um. Yeah, it's gonna go through a process of looking at it some more to just make sure it's good.
Appreciate that. Um, for creative arts.
No meeting, the master planning process is ongoing, the next meeting is December twentieth. Uh, there will be a new artist in residence and a. A pretty interesting sounding program as part of that meeting, part of the annual meeting.
CML?
We have a meeting um, next Friday. And then with that, we should probably talk about scheduling our internal legislative committee.
Agreed, okay, we'll get with Shannon when she gets back. Um, social equity?
Minutes we're in the pack.
Any questions for Carol? No? Okay, the Arts and Cultural Master Plan Steering Committee.
We did have a steering committee meeting, it was very exciting, uh, it was on the fifteenth. Um. Josh and Amanda actually wasn't on the call, but Josh kind of took us through the next steps. Uh, for the master plan, uh, that of, you know, stakeholder conversations followed by focus groups. Uh, they wanted to do a couple produced events where they will get while they're here. Uh, we're trying to identify a good ten day block where. Uh, Josh and Amanda can kind of overlap for a day or two, but that they can kind of cover a larger swath by. You know, Josh getting here on a, on a Wednesday and Amanda getting here on a Saturday, they overlap for a day. And then she stays until the following Wednesday or something like that and do a couple produced events that they would do as well as um. Taking advantage of some events that are already planned for those times. Uh, they talked about um, the CAIC um, event, the Riverwalk, they talked about um. Then uh, it's on my mind, obviously, there, there was a couple of events that they were trying to target. Um, you know, in February and I think they were looking over uh, like. Which uh, I, yes. Um. Which I think will be tough because it'll be hard to sift through, like it'll be such a busy weekend and. I brought that up and they're, they're kind of looking at the schedule and seeing um, when would the best time would be. Uh, they're looking forward after that um, for some webinars and um, they're getting ready to launch a survey pretty soon. Uh, they actually brought uh, the committee some quite, uh, potential questions that uh, as Todd would say, we're beaten up and uh. Looking to, to get that back. Uh, they've, for focus groups, they've done sixteen so far, they have eighteen more to schedule through the end of the year. And uh, they're putting together a what we've heard document and um, yeah, I think they're on a pretty good track.
Just curious, has everyone done an interview with them?
I have not, I have. One scheduled and got pumped out of it. So I'm still gonna reach out.
Yeah.
Do, let me know if you need any contact information, but.
I had, yeah, I had to reschedule mine too, they were very easy to work with.
That's great, I'm sure that's really helpful, I actually think that, I think that weekend could be really good, is that President's Day?
It is.
Well, yeah, let's see what they come up with, okay, well, thanks for the update, sounds great. Does anyone have any other matters they want to discuss right now?
I'd just like to report that the Dark Sky. Movie last night, I thought went very well, Julia. Who left was there as well as staff from planning. Uh, we had, I think thirty-five people, which I thought was pretty good for a snowy, cold. Five o'clock night on a Monday. Uh, two videos are PBS documentaries, documentaries. And if you look at the invite, you can just watch those online if you want to see what the movies were about. But we had a pretty robust conversation after the videos. Uh, not only about the dark sky, but implementation of what the town's goals were and. Uh, a lot of people were talking and nobody said anything bad.
Wow. It's great. Good. All right, I had one, um, I met with Flore this week and she mentioned that the police department is putting out a Spanish. Version of a ticket. Which I had no idea was going on, yes. I had, you know, parking in traffic, I had no idea, um, but I just wanted to give them major kudos because that will help folks. Be able to pay on time, not have to come into the um. Into see a judge, which is great, helps them take care of their business without getting other people in their business. So um, I thought that was really exciting and the fact that they were doing it without um, you know, us even knowing, I just thought was. Um, terrific and deserved to be recognized, so.
Hopefully we can get that county wide.
Yeah, good point. Very good point, I think I'm also gonna me- mention at mayors and managers about the um, Spanish. Uh, web, Facebook page, I think that would be great to have county wide as well, for all, for all the different, so.
We did have a housing meeting today, you didn't ask that.
Clear, and. And said no. No update.
I, the, the only update I want to give is there's, there's nothing really to report, but we spent. Quite some time really doing some pricing exercises on runway with Rick and. It was very, very interesting and uh, I think it got us a little closer to what we're gonna present December tenth, so. But it was fascinating discussion, I thought.
We have the best housing team too.
Good, good staff on housing, that housing group.
Okay. Anything final? Meeting adjourned. It's seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for town council. Um, regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, roll call please, Helen.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton. Steve Gerard. Carol Sade. Jay Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Present.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Um, let's get the meet, the meeting minutes approved for November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Any changes? Everything okay, minutes stand, approval of the agenda, are there any changes?
No changes.
Communications to council, we'll start with public comment, any non-agenda items only. Seeing none, public comment is closed, we're gonna go ahead and get an update from Breckenridge ski area.
Happy winter storm evening.
Yeah.
It's been quite nice.
Ooh.
Thanks for having me, Mayor Council, appreciate it. Um, we're gonna start with just kind of a, a general winter update and kind of what's happened since we've opened. Uh, obviously, it was a phenomenal opening leading into uh, the start of the season. Um, I think falling snow just creates a different energy in that base area, I saw a few of you out there that day, um, thanks for coming out. Um, but we also got a bunch of really great coverage uh, press for both the resort and the town. Got a couple of spots on the weather channel, we had a couple of spots with Fox Weather. Um, and then we had three or four different spots uh, with new stations down in Denver on both Wake Up Breck and then Supporting Building Hope. Um, and then obviously the resort opening, so lots of good stuff coming out there. Um, as much as it had been snowing, temperatures have been a little bit hit and miss for us. Um, and it's still vital that we provide some of those connecting trails with snowmaking, so continue to work through that. Um, focus right now is we're moving over to Peak Seven, so we can get ahead on that game. Uh, this last weekend, we opened up on Upper Peak Nine with the Beaver Run Chair and the Mercury Chair. Um, and then with natural coverage, patrols continuing to explore terrain, as of tomorrow, we'll uh, more than double the acreage at the same time this point last year. Um, so we're looking forward to getting that going, um, and then this weekend we'll bring on E-Chair. The Rocky Chair and on Saturday, we should have the gondola ski back to town, so that creates a, a whole um, addition to the resort that makes things just a lot easier for our guests and our users, so. Um, excited about that. Um, you know, we continue to focus on our flow and circulation around the mountain. Um, ski back to town is obviously a big part of that, we've also installed two additional. Tickers on the mountain where we can do real time updates from our dispatch center with messaging to our guests, uh, we now have those across all five peaks. And then working on some guest messaging to bring, just bring awareness, we've talked about this with the utilization of parking. Um, reservation options for our gondola lots, also encouraging the, the carpool and incentivizing. Um, we have a really strong ability to talk directly with the guests on our channels. Um, which we've found success with, so now it's trying to figure out how we can communicate with those guests who aren't directly in our channels. Um, which is a little bit more of a challenge, but I think they're rolling out a new social media plan that should help with some of that. Um, employees for our third year in a row, we're able to host our employee preview day, which is always super popular. Uh, we did a little employee wake up break and then we opened the list for three or four hours. This year, uh, we saw four hundred and twenty-five employee scans, which is the largest we've had. Um, so we're super proud of that, um, ability for the mountain team to pull that together, it's just. It's a special little time, you know, be able to give some time to those employees to come out, because a lot of them don't get to ride like that, so, um, super excited about that. Um, and then we're currently middle of planning our winter kickoff, which is on December tic, our tenth at the Riverwalk. We would love to have somebody from this group come join us and we kind of do a community rollout to our employees. Um, happy to chat more about that, and then we're also year two of our workforce scheduling platform. Uh, we saw about a sixty percent usage rate last year where employees using the platform are picking up shifts in other departments. So again, it's just giving employees the chance, the chance to get more hours so they can make a sustainable living up here and not just be tied, tied to one team. Um, so we had a few updates on that, we're rolling out and um, we're, we're seeing that that thing is really getting used, especially by. Some of the new employees or the non-skilled positions, um, which we're super happy about on that. And then tomorrow night, we're hosting a Thanksgiving dinner for our employees up to Peak Eight, that's traditionally one of our most attended um, employee dinners, we'll probably do somewhere between three and five hundred. Deners for our employees. Community, celebrate a wake up break, thanks to all of you who came out and joined that. Um, that continues to be a super fun event, we love uh, having that tradition partner with you all in the town to come out. Excuse me. Um, as you all know, we partner with Building Hope, uh, we saw a lot of great press out of that and got uh, really good support and the ski area matched all of the. Donations for Building Hope as well, um, so we're super proud of that. Uphill access is open on Peak Eight, um, I think. I think Peak Nine will be coming on here shortly, real quick. And then Community First Tracks will come back in January, it's our third season doing those, we're super excited about those. We'll also be holding our first tracks for the medallion holders in the Summit Foundation. And then actually working with Shannon to put together something special for the ski area town meeting that's coming up in, into January, I think it is. So we'll be able to get some, get some tracks or get some first tracks for that group as well. We explained at our plastic free initiative across all of our mountain restaurants. So we're super proud about that. Every food and beverage will be plastic free. We also worked with the county, and we got rid of all our compostable items for to-go containers and using an aluminum recyclable container. And then the one area we've got to work on is for our hot cups, we haven't quite found a replacement for those yet. But working with a couple of vendors on those. And then, yeah, a couple of other new items. Up at the Overlook Restaurant, we're testing out some new AI technology for checkout. You might have seen some of that in some of the gas stations around town. First weekend of use really kind of expedited that line system, which, super good. We'll continue to work with that vendor. And then we meet regularly with BGV, just trying to make sure that we're partnering with them as well on all their projects, things are going really good. We got a couple of different things we're working with them on. And then, sorry. Like I said, Peak Seven's the big focus now, we're targeting that for early December. At that time, when we open the Indy Chair, we'll go back to an eight thirty lift open for the remainder of the season. And then after Peak Seven, we'll put all of our efforts up towards Peak, Peak Six and Ten, try and get those areas open. And then one other thing we started doing this year, what we've done in the past, we just got a little more aggressive this year. With a lot of the early snowfall, we started doing what's called track packing. Just getting the cats to go out and drive all over that snow, try and compress it, remove all the air and hopefully hold it. Obviously, we continue to get snow, so we're in a much better position in a lot of our lower mountain areas than we have been in the past because of that, and obviously the natural snowfall. So in theory, we'll be able to make less snow in some of those areas as we move forward as well.
Start, questions?
Awesome, appreciate all the support.
I'll talk to you about the December thing.
Oh. Dollar total on the Building Hope Challenge?
I think somewhere in the neighborhood of three grand from the town and just community. So I think we're continuing to learn lessons with how we message that, and I think there's a few different ways we can, we can continue to improve on that. Yeah, and we'd love to have somebody come down, we do our little community spiel with our employees, if we could partner on that, that would be great.
I'll do that, I, I just need to know some specifics about time and stuff.
Yeah, and I can, we can work around that, so text me, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
We're happy for all this snow. All right, moving on, we don't have any continued business, so we're gonna go right into new business. First reading of council bills, series twenty twenty-four. Number twenty-seven, a bill for an ordinance approving four long-term leases at the Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center.
Mayor Owens and town council before you is an ordinance approving the four long-term leases in the Breckenridge, Breckenridge Grand Vacations Community Center. We spoke about it this afternoon in a work session, and we'll move quickly to prove it and make some changes and bring back some, a longer list of ordinance, or sorry, leases that we do across the town and what those rates are, bring some details to you. But for now, we recommend moving forward with the first reading of this ordinance.
Sounds great, thank you. Any questions for Scott? Any comments from the public on council bill number twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-four? Seeing none, public comment is closed, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass council bill number twenty-seven, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which the mayor read into the record.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yeah. All right, moving into our resolution, series twenty twenty-four, number, resolution number twenty-one. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between, by, between the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County and the Town of Breckenridge and the Town of Blue River. Sorry, no, no.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, before you have a resolution to enter the Town of Breckenridge into intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Blue River and Summit County to protect the parcel at one nineteen Bonanza Trail for open space and secure ex, public accessible Blue River Trail. And as part of this agreement, we will be selling our share of the property to the Town of Blue River. We recommend that you approve this resolution.
Thank you, Duke, sorry, I will literally read anything that anyone gives to me, so, something I'm gonna work on in the new year. Any questions?
Do we need to update that resolution title to fix the?
The typo, yeah, I think they'll get that.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass resolution number twenty-one, series twenty twenty-four, the title of which has been written in the record and will be amended to be grammatically correct.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
I'd just like to make a comment, I think it's awesome that we're able to work with Blue River and get them into our open space program. You know, we've worked so long and so well with the county, I believe this is the first one with Blue River, so it's great to see. Good, good job, Duke and your team, and really want to recognize Blue River for coming in.
Well said, it's awesome. All right, roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving on to matters, planning commission decisions. Planning Commission decisions? All right. We did a lot of this other things. Any, anyone want to add to their other matters? Any new other matters that have arisen? We have a schedule of meetings. Carol and I have found that attending some of the regular meetings and just offering to be council representative has been really well received, and we've reached quite a few people, so that's been fun and interesting. So keep your eye on that, those scheduled meetings, if there's anything you're going to and offer up, or if you want me to go to something, let me know. But besides that, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned?